Hi.
How are you?
Yes, hi. Congratulations on that. So, we're going to have to... Oh, that's so nice. Thanks. I'm glad you're here. It's a special day. I'm glad you're here. 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 Thank you. All this stuff. You're two, two, three. And you're in town. Okay. Yeah. The most... Ah, but then... I'm sorry. You're all... And the guys are all... We're trying to... I want to take a look at her. Yeah. That's my old life. Yeah. He said that was a beautiful... How high? The first two years she had... Three. Did you... This one is... I think they would have... I'm doing it all the way. I'm doing it. My approach to the guy is... I'm just... That was smart on your part. It's Bill Dodd. Hey, Jake. I feel so... I'm... That was smart on your part. It's Bill Dodd. Hey, Jake. I feel so... I'm... I'm... That was smart on your part. It's Bill Dodd. Hey, Jake. I feel so... I'm... 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 That was smart on your part. It's Bill Dodd. Hey, Jake. I feel so... I'm... 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 Where's the Girl Scouts members? Yeah. Yeah. Great. Ah, it's... Yeah. Recent? Oh, I just got my kids. But... Where's that? Are they... Are they... Are they... Are they... Are they... Are they... Hi. Oh. Greetings. How are you? Good to see you. That was... It's okay. Thank you. Really? Really? I can't make it. Are you a recitalist? Well, that's nice. No, I don't know. So, yeah. 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 And I was curious about... I was... Yeah. And I was curious about... I was... I was... I was... I was... I was... Yeah. Now? I said... I'm... 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 So, that's... I'm... What do you think? I'm... I'm... Anyway, Phil, the channel. Yeah. 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 It's awesome. Yeah. 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 It's awesome. Paper, paper. Yeah, I did. I did. And you was... How are you? Great to see you. Well, thanks for coming. It's my fault. It's like... Oh, that's awesome. Hello. Hello and good evening, Ronnet Park. If we could all... We'd like to go ahead and start the meeting. It's 5:01. We pride ourselves on being punctual here in Ronnet Park. A lot of chatter out there, which is great. Welcome. My name is Gerard Judice, and I'm going to lead the city council meeting tonight on behalf of city council. Welcome. It is Tuesday, April the 8th. And can we please have a roll call? Madam City Clerk.
Councilmember Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Elwer.
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sambor.
Here.
Mayor Judice.
Present.
Thank you.
Fantastic. And now, would you please stand and join me for the land acknowledgement? Okay. The city of Ronnet Park acknowledges indigenous peoples as the traditional stewards of the land. Let it be acknowledged that the city of Ronnet Park is located on the traditional homelands of the Federated Indians of Great and Rancheria comprised of the Coast Miwok and Southern Pomo people. And would you remain standing because we're going to have the Girl Scouts comprised of Hannah Caldwell, Kinsley Smith, Finley Smith, and Ally Van Nice come forward and lead us in the salute to the flag? Good evening and welcome.
Please show hands in the air. The flag is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Congrats. Thank you. No, stay right there. We've got some wonderful...
Door prizes.
Door prizes for you and some certificates here. And we're going to take a picture.
So many family photos. Family photos. Ladies, I have their... I appreciate you.
Who's... Who's... And what about kids? What about them? Come on, you're the little... Get out of the way. Get out some bit. Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda is a presentation by Supervisor David Rabbit, but I do not see the supervisor here. So, I think we will skip that for right now and go to recognition for Senator Bill Dodd. And where's my appropriate? No.
Would you let him stand up for this part?
Well, he's going to... We're going to get him up here, too, and it's going to be part roast and part... No. So, so, good evening, Senator, and welcome. And I just want to read this proclamation to show you how grateful we truly are here in Ronnet Park to have been with you for so many years. Whereas Senator Bill Dodd has dedicated his career to public service tirelessly advocating for the people of California with integrity, wisdom, and an unwavering commitment to the greater good. Whereas Senator Dodd began his journey in public service as a Napa County Supervisor before being elected to the California State Assembly and later to the State Senate, where he has served with distinction, championing policies that strengthen our communities, protect our environment, and promote economic opportunity. Whereas throughout his tenure, Senator Dodd has been a steadfast leader on critical issues including wildfire prevention, water management, education, infrastructure, ensuring that California remains resilient and forward-thinking in the face of challenges. Whereas his leadership in bipartisan collab... and bipartisan collaboration in problem-solving and dedication to public policy has earned him the respect and admiration of his colleagues, constituents, and community leaders alike. Whereas Senator Dodd's legacy is one of service, compassion, and impact, leaving behind a lasting imprint on the state of California and the many lives he has touched through his commitment to good governance. Whereas he embarks on well-earned... As he embarks on his well-earned retirement, we extend our deepest gratitude for his years of service and wish him continued success, happiness, and fulfillment in the next chapter of his life. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the city of Ronnet Park City Council hereby recognizes and honors Senator Bill Dodd for his exceptional service and contributions to the people of California, and we commend his remarkable public career and celebrate his well-deserved retirement. Thank you. And we'd love for you to go ahead and say a few words, and then we're going to allow the council to do the same, and we're going to present you with a wonderful proclamation.
Well, first, I appreciate the patience of the mayor and the council. I'm waiting for me to get here to do this since I've been out of office now for almost four months. But nevertheless, I think I save the best for last. This has been an extreme honor to be able to represent Ronnet Park for 10 years. And in my relationship with the council over those 10 years and the community, hopefully, I was, you know, so appreciative of that. And, you know, I was thinking on the way over here, so many things that the Ronnet Park has been a first, and nobody... You know, you don't get credit for all the things you do necessarily, but your library system, your model of your, you know, police system and fire here is unique and original, and it works. And you also have built more housing than anybody. As the mantra at the state of California said, "Build, build, build," you didn't go and fight, you know, the state. You just went ahead and did it. And one of the things that I'm really disappointed in is that communities like Ronnet Park that do the work and don't get special treatment from the state, in my view, you should have had. You built... And so, you know, for your housing, future housing elements, I think you should get credit for that and notice that, hey, we've done the job over time and maybe a little bit more relaxed in the future. But there's just so many things that... And the way you were the first really in trying to tackle the homelessness issue, and for a small city, and you guys don't print money, let's face it. And you found so many different ways to do things, and your creative thinking on the... See, not everything always goes great, but, you know, the town center and everything else. But Ronnet Park is visionary, and you guys have just done, over time, an outstanding job. And I, for one, really appreciate being in your presence in past and present. So, thank you for this incredible honor. I appreciate it very, very much. Thank you.
Absolutely. Hang right there. We're going to turn to my colleagues, but before we do, I just want you to know that this young lady right here prompted me to make sure that we honored you appropriately. And so, I thank Samantha for doing that, and I just wanted to recognize her for that. But I'll turn to Councilmember Adams, please.
Thank you very much. And thank you so much for coming. I know you probably had to interrupt your grand retirement plans and come back to Ronnet Park, but I look back, and I think some of the successes that we've had are because we had the support of folks such as yourself up in Sacramento. That was a notice and appreciated, and thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Susan. Councilmember Elwer.
Yeah. Has been great working with you for the past four years, five years, since I joined this council. And, you know, your unique way of working with our city has been really tremendous, and we always carry that legacy, and thank you for taking care of our constituent for that long. And thank you for being a friend as well.
Thank you, Jack. Councilmember, please.
Thank you for that. Yeah, I can't say thank you enough for... I kind of launched in here, and you and your team were so great about getting me up to date and being so available, being a new vice mayor right in the get-go and then into mayorship. And for the opportunity to get to testify on a bill with you, to get a different type of front row on seeing legislation and the impacts that it has for everybody in our state, let alone in this region. And I think it's unique as well. Ronnet Park's a unique carve-out into the Senate District and Assembly District, and so we bring in a different characteristic. And as easily as we could have been pushed to the side, or, you know, sometimes it happens with students, like, they're so great, so you don't put as much attention on them. You and your office were great about still checking in and knowing and helping us continue to push stuff into the finish line. So, really, thank you for your leadership and for kind of setting a foundation for us as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Samantha. Vice Mayor.
Yes, Senator Dodd, I just want to say thank you so much for being a champion for Ronnet Park for all these years, and you've definitely made a positive impact, and we will continue to do the good work.
Thank you so much. We have known each other for a long time, and you've always been there for me. You've always been a mentor. I mean, going back to when I was on the planning commission or just business-wise, so I really appreciate you. I appreciate your staff especially as well. Logan, Ezra, they just were so responsive. And really, Ronnet Park has always just craved, you know, proactive representation, and that's what you've brought to us. And you've been very responsive, and we're very, very, very grateful. So, thank you, and now we're going to take a picture and do the good stuff. Great. I think you were the first mayor during my assembly, wasn't it?
That's so cool. Just... Hey, what's up?
Yeah. Absolutely. Yes.
Great word. Sure. I'm asking. You're good. All right.
Hey, Rabbit. You were ready to show up, right?
Yeah.
I'm sure you...
Yes.
Senator, if you could hang back for just one second. Before we move on to Supervisor Rabbit, we're going to allow Past Mayor Jake McKenzie just to say a quick... A quick word here.
I appreciate the courtesy, Mr. Mayor. I'm Jake McKenzie, 1536 Gladstone Way, city of Ronnet Park. I first came across Bill Dodd when he was a supervisor, and I was a new member of the Metropolitan Transportation Commission. And I evidently struck a chord with then-Supervisor Dodd because when I left MTC and the resolution honoring me, it said that then-Supervisor Dodd was amazed who this person was wearing a Hawaiian shirt and shorts to his first meeting of MTC. And that was the beginning of a beautiful friendship and collegial relationship. And so, I can speak from the historical point of view. Supervisor Dodd has indeed been a grand friend to the city of Ronnet Park, and both as an assembly member and as a senator. And he's one of the reasons I'm down here tonight. Came also down here to hear Rabbit and to make a comment later on.
Supervisor Rabbit.
He's been a great guy for this city. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. And with that segue, we will welcome Supervisor Bill Dodd for his update and presentat... I said Supervisor... Supervisor David Rabbit. You got me going, Jake. You got me going. Supervisor David Rabbit to give his presentation.
See you later.
All right. All right. Yep. Show some grace. Welcome, Supervisor. Thank you for joining us tonight.
No, thank you, and I was so worried I was going to be late. There's a little traffic accident out there, but totally on me, I did not give myself enough time. It is great to see former Senator Dodd, and I'm so happy that you recognized his service. He will be missed, and I consider Bill a good friend, and I've known him quite a while. It's always great to see people go on to the state that have that local government experience and remember where they... The battles that you and I and others have gone through to make sure that they can actually represent constituents in the state for the better. So, thank you very much, and thank you so much for allowing me the time tonight. I'll be brief. I just want to give you a few... Hit a few items and maybe I'm open to questions, of course. Just to let you know real quickly, we'll start with everything that I know that your city manager knows. It all starts with those revenues in order to do those nice projects we all want to do. Oh, thank you so much. Is it on? Can I go? Oh, sorry. There we go. So, the Board of Supervisors are... Will be conducting our spring budget workshops over three days at the end of this month. This allows us an opportunity to gather information and discuss priorities with our 27 departments in advance of our budget hearings in June. I personally really do appreciate this, the way that we go about this, because it really means that our budget cycle lasts for a good couple of months. We get that first glimpse of the challenges and opportunities from those 27 departments. We start to formulate kind of the revenues, that expectations that are there, and then work on those two months of really matching. And of course, as you all know, the priorities or the resources will always not be enough, and the priorities will always outpace those resources. But trying to really make the intelligent decisions and really giving it some good thought going forward, I think, is so important. The county budget is approximately $2.5 billion. Most of that is passed through funds, to be honest. The County General Fund is approximately about $550 million. And I think we all share this together. The county's biggest concern for fiscal year '25, '26 is the uncertainty of state and federal funding. The concerns include policy issues, mainly the federal government cutting funding going forward and clawing back appropriations already expected. Cities are well aware that sales tax continues to be flat at best or, you know, could quickly decline in an economic downturn. And the County General Fund has the advantage of greater dependence on property tax, but we do anticipate property tax growth to slow as interest rates remain higher than they have been and kind of due to that general malaise in uncertainty in the economy. And again, property tax tends to lag. It takes a little longer for it to really see the effect of it declining, but that also means that it takes longer for it to see the impact when it starts to rise. We expect that to be about a two-year cycle. The stock market decline, should it last through December, or be a significantly down year, is concerning in the medium term because, again, the impact on pension rates, and we're about two years from that impact, and we need to plan for those increases now in order to smooth over any problematic areas going forward. And one last thing I'll make mention of is the general liabilities, which you probably already know, too, remain a major concern. Undoubtedly, like your own city, we are seeing huge increases in premiums for excess liability insurance coverage. Some of that due to... Well, a lot of it due to everything that's going on in the whole insurance industry itself, but also changes in state statutes are also a concern concerning that increased liability for local governments. I will tell you that we just saw LA County was in the news recently with a $4 billion settlement in a case, and those are really sobering numbers going forward. So, we're cautious there. Perhaps switching total gears, talk about that kind of core governmental service that we all provide and talking about roads. It's great to have two former MTC members here. I was a six-year member on MTC, proud of the work that we've done there, but also proud of the work that Sonoma County has done to make sure that we have some unprecedented investments in improving our road system. In back in 2011, I co-authored a report on the county's roads, and we recommended a strategy moving forward to make those improvements. And part of the problem for Sonoma County, the challenge is 1,369 miles of roads, and that is a lot of roads. That's about... That's a road from here to Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, that all you and I and everyone else in this county is responsible for maintaining. That's a lot of asphalt. That's a lot of area. And just to put that in perspective, Marin County, just to the south of us, they have 420 miles. Napa, 450 miles, and I'm talking the unincorporated county. Solano, 576 miles. And again, Sonoma County with 1,369 miles. Even sprawling Mendocino County has fewer miles of roads with just over 1,000. Good portion of those not paved, by the way. So, it's been a challenge. For the last 13 years or so, we've made an investment of about $270 million on our road system. I will say, because of the way that road funding has historically been funded for counties, our Sonoma County has put the most discretionary funding into road paving than any other county in California. And part of that is the road spiel. It's changed a little bit, and Jake knows this, from the gas tax appropriations, but for every, you know, for every dollar that we pay in gas tax, the state keeps 44 cents... Excuse me, 56 cents for the state highway system. The other 44 is split evenly amongst cities and counties. Cities like Ronnet Park, you get a per capita share just based upon population, but for the counties, that split is 25% on road miles and 75% on population. So, a county of our size with as many roads as we have, we are disadvantaged. And undoubtedly, that'll probably never change because it also corresponds to, in Sacramento, to those more popular counties who therefore have more legislators who don't see the reason to change that. So, what we've had to do is to put our general fund into roads going forward. Just real quickly, again, on the road miles piece, Orange County, over the same period of time, gets 16 times more money per mile of road than Sonoma County because of population, less miles of roads, all those other factors. So, it's been really important to make sure that we keep this up, and of course, as you know, it's an ongoing obligation. So, for the last 13 years, we have treated about 546 miles of roads. Proud of that. We got a long ways to go. That's about averaging about 42 miles every cycle, which is a good thing. Here in my district, in the southern part of the county, that's about 215 miles. And I know, and I talked to Supervisor Corsi before coming here to make sure that he'd want to join me and sensed his regards, said, "Go ahead." But I know that D3 has fewer roads, used to have the fewest roads. I think it grew a little bit with the last redistricting. I couldn't tell you exactly what it is, but I know prior it was about 20 miles total. Then D5 has the most roads, but we're kind of right in the middle and down this way. The number of miles of roads that have been treated out of that 215 has been 115 miles of roads. And of course, this coming cycle, we have another $31 million going forward. So, proud of the work that we've done there. The goal of the report 14 years ago was to improve our pavement condition index, which was not where we wanted it to be. And we have, year over year, in spite of having 1,369 miles of roads, our major roads are considered very good with a PCI of 69 to 80. What brings this down are our local roads, some of which probably will never be paved, to be honest, because there are long driveways up hillsides that might serve one or two houses, and it would be hard to really justify the expenditure there. But just wanted to give you an update. Roads, it'll be a challenging year to put additional dollars into roads, but we did... Not only do we put any one-time funds, we... Within it, we have a new roads fund that has an escalator within it that we continue to make sure that we can keep up with the pace of... That's about averaging about 42 miles every cycle, which is a good thing. Here in my district, in the southern part of the county, that's about 215 miles. And I know, and I talked to Supervisor Corsi before coming here to make sure that he'd want to join me and sends his regards, said, "Go ahead." But I know that D3 has fewer roads, used to have the fewest roads. I think it grew a little bit with the last redistricting. I couldn't tell you exactly what it is, but I know prior it was about 20 miles total. Then D5 has the most roads, but we're kind of right in the middle and down this way. The number of miles of roads that have been treated out of that 215, it's been 115 miles of roads. And of course, this coming cycle, we have another $31 million going forward. So, proud of the work that we've done there. The goal of the report 14 years ago was to improve our pavement condition index, which was not where we wanted it to be, and we have year over year, in spite of having 1,369 miles of roads. Our major roads are considered very good with a PCI of 69 to 80. What brings this down are our local roads, some of which probably will never be paved, to be honest, because there are long driveways up hillsides that might serve one or two houses, and it would be hard to really justify the expenditure there. But just wanted to give you an update. Roads, it'll be a challenging year to put additional dollars into roads, but we did, not only do we put any one-time funds, we, within that, we have a new roads fund that has an escalator within it that we continue to make sure that we can keep up with the pace of inflation, especially with the price of oil and whatnot. A couple of other infrastructure improvements, just to make note of, there's, there's two roundabouts coming forward on Old Redwood Highway. This one is at Eli, and there's another one at, hopefully I have it here. Whoops, we've got the print on here. The other one at Railroad. So, I think you all know that Railroad's been kind of a, a pretty poor performing intersection with lots of collisions. And I just came through your new roundabout, or your relatively new roundabout right up the road, and you all know the advantage of roundabouts. We actually looked at signalization of these, both these intersections, and of course, once you do the analysis, and if you can, if you can acquire and have the space to go forward, and that purple space is the, the new acquisition from those four neighbors who, we walked that property just last week, both sites, to make sure that they're satisfied with what's happening and make sure we hear those concerns. But the roundabouts, as you know, have eight potential vehicle collision points as opposed to 32 for a regular intersection, even with signals. And for pedestrians, that goes from 24 down to eight. So, it's safer all the way, all around. On Old Redwood, this is all part of a traffic study that was done in Penn, in and around Penn Grove that stretches up this way. I do want to say thank you very much. I know I've said this to some of you individually. Thank you very much for Rona Park being the first city in the county to actually have a regional transportation impact fee. That, that $3,000 that goes out, I got a laugh out of Jake on that one, but that $3,000 that goes out towards the projects on the, part of this, there's, these are probably per capita more expensive than that, but it does help make everything kind of come into fruition going forward. We battle, to be honest, with congestion versus flow versus speed, as I know you all do. And then the freeway work push more people, Highway 37 pushes people and every, you know, every other piece. So, it's always a battle to make sure that we spend the right money in the right spots. We did a traffic study because we went to the community. There was about 30 wonderful ideas, but how do you prioritize those? You turn to the experts and say, "How do we get the biggest bang for the buck?" Because we can't do all of them, and how do we prioritize them? So, Railroad, Eli, Main Street, there's a, a left turn pocket, a right turn lane, and there's some other kind of low-hanging fruit in terms of striping, a little bit of narrowing, a little bit of traffic signals, and we're looking at ways to, you know, in spite of the, the new state law that allows you to change speed limits, there's still certain conditions to that, and looking for those areas where you can actually implement that and then make it make sense. And of course, you know, establishing a speed limit is one thing, getting people or enforcing it is another. So, we continue to work on that as well. I thought, this is a huge subject. Yeah, and, and this is kind of the last topic. I'll just hit on this because I think it's important, and I know that many of you are very familiar with this, but there's a lot happening. There, there's a lot of controversy. I think water in California has always been controversial and complicated. We're trying to make it less so with this particular project, and we're trying to get the information out about what it is and what it's not. I do serve as Chair of URA, and URA is the Eel Russian Project Authority. It's a JPA between the County of Sonoma, Mendocino County Inland Water and Power, which in and of itself is a JPA with Mendocino and Potter Valley and other entities up there, and Sonoma Water. The Round Valley Indian Tribe also sit on the JPA, although due to sovereignty concerns, they're not signatories. Excuse me. URA has the authority to negotiate with PG&E as the utility moves forward with their decision to surrender operations at Potter Valley Hydroelectric Project and decommission the Scott Dam and Cape Horn Dam on the Eel River in Lake County. Most importantly, URA will also have the legal capacity to own, construct, and operate a new water diversion facility near the Cape Horn Dam. That tunnel that, that diversion will use, for over 100 years, an eight-foot diameter, redwood-lined, one-mile-long tunnel delivered water into PG&E's pen stocks in Potter Valley, which produced energy or electricity. The residual water then passed through Potter Valley, was used for irrigation there before heading down into Lake Mendocino on the upper reaches of the Russian River. And for the sake of the health of both the Eel and the Russian, and in order to maintain water supply to hundreds of thousands of residents within those three counties, the diversion needs to continue, and that is the goal of Sonoma Water. While perhaps not the only strategy, we believe we have the best chance to continue the flow of water by being included in the PG&E surrender application to the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, or FERC. FERC is responsible for PG&E's power production. They're going to surrender that. That's a process that goes on at the federal level. They describe how they're going to deal with the existing facilities, whether they all come down, stay up, something in between. It was important for Sonoma Water to be part of that conversation, to be included in that surrender license so that we can continue the diversion, which is really the most important. So, under that document, it allows that diversion to continue, and we're in there right now, and that's a great thing. There will be changes, but those changes are for the most part to ensure the health of both the Eel and the Russian River watersheds and the fish that rely on the ecosystem, and in turn, the 600,000-plus people that rely on the system for potable drinking water, including all of us down this way. Sonoma Water is agnostic really on whether Scott Dam or Cape Horn remain or are taken down, because at the end of the day, it's the diversion, it's the flow of the water, it's to maintain that piece of water that comes through the hill down into Lake Mendocino that really we're most concerned about. And to be honest, it's not really even about the quantity of water, it's about the maintaining the minimum in-stream flows so that we can make sure that we have a healthy system on the Russian Riverside as well as a healthy system on the Eel side. The Pacific Gas and Electric Company, or PG&E, is surrendering that, like I said. They identify, I'll say this because I think there's many reasons that I'm sure that they're moving in that direction, but I think it's also, the, what's true is the business, it's a business decision at the end of the day. The project's failure to produce revenues that offset its operating costs, and, you know, PG&E has determined to push away the, or get rid of the Potter Valley project, perhaps because Scott Dam represents an economic liability that the company cannot afford. And speaking of affording a liability, you know, originally, the County of Sonoma, the County of Mendocino, in Mendocino Inland Water, Sonoma Water, we all looked into seeing whether or not we should take over that system. And it's a huge system and a huge liability. And, you know, we even went and conferred with FERC, and FERC said, "No, you're not the entity to do that. It's really a state or federal-sized obligation." And so, we're moving in that direction, and that's why the diversion is so important. You know, I can say this, as Chair of the State Seismic Safety Commission, Scott Dam unfortunately is seismically vulnerable. It's a, was built in 1920s, was well-built then, but obviously they didn't know what they know today. There is a Bartlett Springs Fault Zone that runs through Lake Pillsbury about 5,000 feet east of the dam, and the dam is built on some rock that is not considered to today's standards to be what you would want with that, all those conditions at play. And for, and the truth is, on Scott Dam, for the last so many years, they haven't been able to lift the final spill gates to fill the reservoir to its capacity because of that issue on the seismic side of things. So, PG&E is looking to decommission and demolish the dam. And I know in this day and age, when you talk about tearing dams down or draining reservoirs, it can create a lot of angst and discussion, and it has. But that's part of the reason, and again, from our standpoint, it's really about making sure the water continues to flow through that tunnel down the pen stocks, which may or may not produce energy, to be honest, but into the upper reaches of Lake Mendocino. This Friday, Congressman Huffman is having a press conference up at Coyote Dam on Lake Mendocino to announce a feasibility study that's going, being underway to raise the level of the lake. You know, the lake was only built to about half its capacity originally. It was always designed to be higher. They actually bought enough land around it to make that happen. I think what's true though, if you do that, if you raise the dam and it's hundreds of millions of dollars, it's a big project, you do need to have the diversion continue because the watershed above Lake Mendocino is not all that large, and so it's really kind of working together hand in glove. And so, you know, we'll continue to work on all the different resiliency projects. We'll continue to work on Plan B, and I can't say enough good things about the Water Agency in terms of the forecast-informed reservoir operations, which I personally think is just a wonderful thing, and it, it's the really updating to today's technology with radar systems, better weather predictability, understanding where those, our atmospheric rivers are really going to hit within our watershed and makes, making sure that we then communicate that with the Army Corps to increase our water storage. And this last year, if you looked at both Lake Sonoma and Lake Mendocino, we had historic water levels in both of those lakes, and that was not long after droughts. And that's because of FERO, again, Forecast-Informed Reservoir Operation, which is saddled with another long acronym of AQPI, which is Advanced Quantitative Precipitation Information, which is swapping out Doppler radars for X-band radars to really predict where those, where those storms will hit. And I, and I don't want to use my, overuse my time, but I will tell you this, back in 2014, in the midst of a really dry year, a storm was coming in, and at that time, Coyote Dam, the Army Corps, God bless them, they use a rulebook from 1954 when the dam was built, and it said, "If on this date, the water level is this high and a storm is coming, you release this much water," which they did, but the storm never hit. And that's, that's why Governor Newsom, some time later, was able to hold a press conference out in the middle of the cracked lake bed because that water was released and all went to, and it was about a year's worth of total water, was about a year's worth of water. That's where we said, "Got to do something better than rely on a rulebook from 1954." With that, with today's technology, and we partnered with Scripps down in UC San Diego and NOAA and came up with FERO. And I'm really proud of that because it's, it launched here in Sonoma County on Lake Mendocino. We have a temporary on Lake Sonoma, but it's now in the entire West Coast, up in Oregon, down Southern California. Anywhere that is within three days of discharge to a safe, to an ocean. They're trying to get it into other states, but it's a great thing to be part of because I think ultimately it will allow us to manage our water much better going forward. So, with that, I appreciate again the opportunity. It's great to be with you, and thank you so much for all the collaboration with the county, and continue to look forward to working together and be happy to take questions or not, Mr. Mayor.
Absolutely, and we really appreciate the partnering as well. If we have a quick, I mean, we could sit down and talk to Supervisor for hours and hours and hours, and, and we do, and we, and we love it. But a quick comment or a quick question?
I'd just like to say thank you for coming. Thank you for the information. I have the privilege of serving with Supervisor Rabbit on the A-Bag and appreciate the time we have to have you tutor me on what's going on in the county, and I learned more about all these budget things, and I, I appreciate the work you do on behalf of Rona Park.
Thank you. I appreciate you too.
I know that you and Supervisor Corsi, you know, take serious your responsibility to represent people of Rona Park and are very responsive to our pleas and our telephone calls. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Councilmember?
Yeah, thank you Supervisor for coming tonight and trying to give us a little bit of a hint of what is going on in the world and to give also the constituent a little bit of, you know, understanding of what we are going to be facing soon and that the work is not easy. So, thank you for taking the time to come here tonight.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Councilmember?
Thank you for taking the time, and I think it's so well-presented because it's such dense information, but it's very helpful in being able to also put into perspective and that you noted, one of my questions was, is D3's road numbers, miles in there, and we're close. So, we, you know, you've got something which you were able to refer to and how we look in comparison to our neighboring counties as well. So, just appreciate you taking the time to come and make that presentation and kind of remind us all how intertwined we really are and the work to make sure our constituents and residents are getting the resources that they deserve, that they're, they have the right to.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
And I too just wanted to say thank you. It's nice to see you two days in a row. We really appreciate you taking the time to break down some of these very complex projects that the county is working on, and I'm really excited about those roundabouts. I travel that road every day, go through both of those intersections, and the need is definitely there. So, thank you for that. No other questions.
Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor, and it is a pleasure to serve with you on GGB, and you know, you are the keeper of the historical knowledge when it comes to transportation and when it comes to water, for sure. And it's unfortunate you're no longer serving on MTC. Hopefully, at one point, you'll be able to get back on that board because you just do yeoman's work, and we really appreciate it, and we appreciate your representation here in Rona Park.
I appreciate that very much. There's no shortages, challenges at every, any level, certainly what's happening and, you know, and must say that we've already have some, you saw the brick grants from Napa County in the paper. We have the same situation here in Sonoma County. We probably will not be getting that money, 51 million total. Some COVID money as well, we got word that we're not going to be receiving, and some other, a few other little things. We're still trying to sort it all out, but we'll, we'll obviously all stay in touch and hopefully the things will calm down and we can keep serving our constituents as, as well as possible. Again, thank you so much for allowing me to be here.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And thank you, Councilmember. Go right ahead. We'll continue with a proclamation, Mayor's proclamation proclaiming April 5th through the 11th as Week of the Young Child, and it's my pleasure to give this proclamation. Whereas, the Childcare Planning Council of Sonoma County and other local organizations in conjunction with the National Association for the Education of Young Children, we are celebrating the Week of the Young Child, April 5th through the 11th. Whereas, these organizations are working to improve early care and education opportunities that provide a foundation of learning for all children in Rona Park. Whereas, the first years of a child's life are the period of the most rapid brain development and lay the foundation for all future learning. Whereas, participation in high-quality, early childhood education saves taxpayer dollars, makes working families more economically secure, and prepares children to succeed in school, earn higher wages, and live healthier lives. Whereas, many children, or, excuse me, many early childhood educators earn poverty-level wages and do not have the basic workplace benefits such as health insurance, paid sick leave. 45% of family childcare providers and 50% of childcare centers, teachers, and assistants in Sonoma County used at least one form of public support, most often Medi-Cal. Whereas, young children need skilled, educated, competent, consistent, and compensated early childhood educators. Whereas, working families need sufficient, accessible, and affordable, high-quality childcare spaces beginning at birth and, and to be available in the community. And whereas, early childhood educators need the ability to earn a professional wage that is commensurate with the required education and skills they bring to the complex and valuable work they do. I, Gerard Judice, on behalf of the City Council proclaim April 5th through the 11th, 2025, as the Week of the Young Child, and encourage all residents to support the importance of early childhood education. And here to receive that proclamation is Diana Avila, and welcome Diana. Would you like to say a couple of words?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Yes. Okay, great. Hi, thank you so much for that proclamation. It's really an honor, part of the Childcare Planning Council of Sonoma County. We are a small forum, and we're really trying to get out into the community and encourage equitable access to childcare and supporting our early learning educators, especially now with the uncertainty that's going on in our community and our wider nation. So, I really appreciate that, and I look forward to serving our children in the best way possible. Thank you.
Fantastic. I'll open it up to my council for a quick comment, and then we'll take a nice photo. Please.
Thanks for the work you do. I think it's, falls under the category of things that people don't even know that are going on that are so very important, taking care of our children. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Councilmember?
Thank you so much because you are preparing our future, and like my colleague just said, it's really hard for people to really see what you do in order to prepare those children for becoming better human as an adult, so really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember?
Yeah, I went to a conference last year, and a proverb was shared of, it's not asked, "How are you doing?", but "How are the children doing?", whether it's your own or the community's, because that's a true measurement of how everyone else is doing. And so, I think the work done specifically for children and youth is very, very important and not easy work, and thankless.
And thankless and not lots of funding towards it, unfortunately. So hopefully, we see that change sooner than later, kind of nationwide, let alone locally. So thank you so much for all your work.
Yeah, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, I really see childcare as the thing that keeps our society and our economy going, because without it, we all couldn't continue to function and make money to feed our families. So we really appreciate the work that you're doing and the advocacy for our young people.
Thank you.
Yes, and I concur. And the thing that was the most shocking to me, as I was reading this, was that 45% of family child providers and 50% of childcare centers seek assistance, most often Medi-Cal, which is just, we just need to try to find some way beyond that, so that they are properly compensated for the important work that they do. And thank you for being an advocate, you know, tireless advocate for this. So, thank you, and we just want to applaud you. And we'll take a picture as well.
Wonderful.
Alexander. Please welcome Peter. You have three minutes. Please proceed.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I'm in a good mood. I'm kind of excited. I just got, I just listened to an interview on KBBA. I was on the same interview with Jackie Elword, who's probably going to soon be our Lieutenant Governor, with Mike, Mike McWhorter, he's the governor. I can sort of see that already. So I was listening to that, and I kept hearing "Cisé play" in the background. I was getting a little tired of "Cisé play." I can't wait until they start saying "Ahora," "Ahora," like now.
I'm sorry, Peter, would you turn your microphone on, please?
Oh.
There you go.
Is it on?
Yep, we can hear you better now.
I gotta start all over again.
Thank you. No, you can't start all over again, but please continue.
Well, if nobody heard. Okay, so, very good. So what I have is this, and that is that the Church Temple of Salt and Light, Sophia's Restoration of Sight, whereas, "All to be blessed and lightly salted require, simply required, lovingly inspired, thereby exalted, all servant masters averting disasters, attaining spiritual pardons, both praising and laboring in the Genesis gardens with concern and care, with grace and flair for the innocent and needy, walking by faith rather than sight, and doing what is right, denying any and all that is greedy, respectfully, lovingly honoring all sentient life, so too Mother Earth, abracadabra, hallelujah, the second coming's true birth." So the revival is liberty leads, uniting by song the vets and law enforcement gangs, so too the clear-minded sober AA Brothers and Sisters, and the biker and car clubs in support of students. And so I share that this is happening, and I mentioned to people, if you've never looked up Delacroix's Liberty, it's a beautiful image of a red, white, and blue flag being carried by liberty, leading all the men to victory. And I believe that this woman exists today in Sonoma County, and that she will bring all these groups together by her voice. I sort of knew that a long time ago when I first heard her sing Ave Maria, and that's Carmina Salcedo, a most beautiful, beautiful voice. And so, I'm sharing this information and the fact that, you know, "Ahora" in regards to us knowing that, you know, it's time for the gardens and the greenhouses, and the force has awakened. And I also want to make sure that, and I checked with several people, and I was told that George Lucas would absolutely like to know that Karen Hungerford, a long time ago, received a whopping $16 to weave the outfit that was worn by Yoda. And I have given the phone number of Karen Hungerford to Jackie Elword, so that when George Lucas or one of his associates calls, that he can call and maybe take her out to dinner. I'm sure he would like to do that. So thank you for blessing me with your time. Have a beautiful evening.
Next up, Steve Keith, please, welcome Steve.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor and staff. I just wanted to remind everybody that this week is the spring book sale for the Friends of the Library bookstore. It's not only the best bookstore in all of Roanoke Park, but the only one. Nevertheless, it doesn't hold them back. I've been to many throughout the state, and this one is by far the best run, the largest. Jake knows? So for members, members only, Wednesday night, but then Thursday, Friday, and Saturday for the public. Great deals. It recycles and reuses those books and keeps them out of the landfill. I encourage you all to go often. Bring cash, bring cash.
Thank you. Oh, sorry. Thank you, Steve. Thank you very much. Joyce Powell, please, come on up. Welcome. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me. I'm here. My name is Joyce Powell. My husband couldn't be here, because he's coaching the Rancho softball team, and they had to go to Antioch. So I'm here on both of our beheads. And what I'm here for is, I live at 5760 Dolores, and apparently, someone complained about my motor, my old motorhome that was in my driveway over, that's been there for 20 years, and it's on rocks instead of cement. And so, apparently, one of the city guys came around, and he gave us a citation on it. And the time that he had given it to us, he gave us like 30 days to do something about it. And so I immediately tried calling donations to try to get rid of it, because, you know, we haven't been using it for years. Me and my husband are both retired and on limited incomes. Anyway, so the fact of it was, they're not enforcing this rule, per se, throughout the whole city, and I just feel like they've kind of like, kind of putting the burden on us as elderly people to do something about it in such a short, limited time, because he's given us two different citations, and then on top of the two different citations that he gave us for this, to move it, he end up, the city has sent us out two more citations for not paying these two citations. So it's up to $600 now, which me and my husband don't have that kind of money to pay. And we've done everything we've tried, and what we finally have gotten, a family member, a friend of ours, that is going to take the motorhome, and we're going to move it to their property, but because of not being able with the weather, and he was out of the country for three months, he just got back at the end of March. And so we are planning to move it there, but for the time being, to stop these citations getting, we end up having my friend, because me and my husband can't do it. I'm 71, my husband's 73. He came over and got a forklift and moved it to our driveway. So it's kitty kind of around our driveway right now, and we're in the process to move it this week over to the property. And what I'm here for is to see if, you know, if you guys could waive these fees on our behalf, because we just can't pay it, you know, it's just...I've lived in this town for over 60-some years, and so has my husband, you know, and I've loved Roanoke Park. I've never, me and my kids, my grandkids, we all went to the high school here, and I love this town. And I love what it represents, you know, a small community, and that's why I'm here tonight, to see if that's possible.
Thank you. And although we typically can't comment, I'd want to say, first of all, thank you for your commitment to Roanoke Park and the many years that you've been here. And we do have staff people in the room that you can start the discussion with, and we appreciate you bringing this to our attention, and we'll see what can be done.
Okay.
Okay? And I believe that the city manager is talking to the staff people right now, and so, yeah. So thank you, thank you very much.
Do I need to?
Yeah, are we handing this off to?
Yeah, so the staff is going to follow.
Perfect. Staff is gonna, yeah, they're gonna stalk you.
Should I go back there then, now then?
Absolutely.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, thank you very much. We appreciate you coming down.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that ends public comment. We're now going to go to the consent calendar. Do any of my, I'm sorry.
I believe there might be another comment.
No, no, there's not. Yeah, not under general comments. So, that's okay. We won't forget it. So, do any of my councilmembers have to pull or make a comment or are conflicted on any of the items?
Are you talking about the consent calendar?
I am.
I'd like to pull item 7I for a brief discussion.
Perfect. I think it's going to be more than brief, but yes.
And for myself, I need to recuse myself on 7H. I am a Girl Scout. Bet you didn't know that.
Fantastic. So, we're going to pull 7I, and that will be that comment that's going to come in. And then I would like to ask for a motion on all items.
Some moved.
Okay, does that have a second?
All second.
Okay.
If I may have just a second. So Vice Mayor, you are conflicted on item 7, what was the number, 7?
H is in happy.
An H.
H.
So, a consent calendar is passed by a, the consent calendar with the exception of 7I is passed by 401. Vice Mayor Samborn is recused on item 7H.
Yep, as soon as we vote. So we'll do a vote of acclamation. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Anyone recusing? Abstaining? Well, no, never mind. So yes, motion carries to 401. Thank you. Now that we got through that, now, let's talk about 7I. And would you like to start this off, Vanessa?
Oh, yeah.
And good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. I have a few slides, and then we can, if there's any questions or anything, we can discuss any other things in the items. So I wanted to give a general overview of the entire project, because the plans and specifications just show the trail portion of the project. So this is called the Trail to Crane Creek Regional Park Project. The project number is 2007-19, because this has been a project since 2007 with the city. We applied for Ag and Open Space Grant back in the day, 2007, and then we reapplied recently for more funding in 2020, which we received from Ag and Open Space. So the entire scope of this project starts from right to left at Crane Creek Regional Park, which is in the county, and has disc golf and a lot of dirt trails there. So we connect the trail through a piece of city-owned property, which is that sort of L-shaped or Z-shaped property. It's 128 acres. And that yellow line shows how the trail would run roughly through that property to make it accessible, so it would meet accessibility requirements for trails. And then it connects to the blue dash line, which is an existing water tank access road for our water tank, for the Darren Jenkins Water Tank. And then at the left of that dash line, there is a bridge connection that goes over Copeland Creek. It's about a 90-foot span of bridge that spans over the creek. And then there's a little bit more trail leading south to a proposed traffic signal at Laurel Drive, which is Sonoma State Road and Petaluma Hill Road. So that's a fully, fully signalized intersection with a pedestrian crossing on the south side of that intersection for pedestrians to cross the road safely. And then we run through Sonoma State University with wayfinding signage and connect to the existing Copeland Creek Trail, which runs all the way through Roanoke Park until a barrier here at Highway 101. And then if you could get across there, you could continue Copeland Creek off-road trail all the way to Forestville off-road. So, so that's the entirety of this project. This portion that's being awarded today, or proposed to be awarded today, is for the trail portion, so it doesn't include the traffic signal. We bid that project separately, and that'll be coming to council soon. So funding-wise, back in 2020, we started accumulating city of Roanoke Park funding. 70% roughly of the funding is restricted for bike and pedestrian facilities. It's Measure M, TDA Article III. We do have some infrastructure funding in there and general fund funding. And then Sonoma County Parks, who partnered with us along with Sonoma State University with the original grant application, committed to around $728,000 in their funding as well. We received the grant from Ag and Open Space, which is roughly $1.36 million. And tonight, we're hoping to bridge the gap with one budget amendment to move $700,000 from an existing creek pathway replacement project. That's currently a couple of years from being through the environmental phase into this project. And then Regional Parks has proposed to fund the rest of the funding gap, along with taking on the risk of any change orders that happen throughout the project. And then another good thing is, we have our partners at Sonoma County Regional Parks, they've been with us through this whole thing. They are great at maintaining trails, so they have, as part of this agreement, decided it's, they would like to take on the cost of maintaining the trail, even through the portion that the city is keeping. So going back to this slide, part of the agreement with Sonoma County Regional Parks is we're going to dedicate that red-hatched area to Sonoma County, and they will extend Crane Creek Regional Park by 75 acres, and then maintain that acreage and graze it like they do with the regional park. So we would be donating some of that to Sonoma County as part of this matching grant agreement, and putting a conservation easement over that 75 acres, so it would stay that way in perpetuity. This project also fulfills some of our ATP project goals by making some off, more off-road connections. And then, just regionally, this project removes one more barrier for folks to get all the way from Forestville off-road to Jacklunden Square. And there's only one piece remaining to make that full connection, and that's the Highway 101 bike and pedestrian overcrossing. So that is a summary, a little bit more information on the projects.
Perfect. Thank you very much. And we would like to get a motion and then a second.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Second.
Fantastic. Now we can begin the discussion. Why don't we do this in two parts? Can we do questions first, and then we'll do public comment, and then we'll do deliberation?
That sounds great. My question is, can you go back a slide, please? How did you get?
Oh, this one?
No, 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 the one with the money on it.
Okay.
There you go. How did you get the Sonoma County Regional Parks people to take that on with the change orders? Do we just send you some negotiation school, or, I mean?
They're great partners.
Right.
They're great partners. They want, we all, at the staff level, have been trying to work through this project for a long time.
I'll save my congratulations statement for later. Thank you.
Councilmember?
Great presentation. I don't have a question. Just excited to see this project happening, especially in this time. Yeah.
Councilmember?
Yeah, I don't have any questions. I'm excited to see this move forward. I was out there this weekend with Vincent, my puppy, and he loved seeing the cows and made sure that they were great. And he loved seeing the cows and made sure that they were grazing peacefully and was walking with some folks from out of town, and they were like, oh, this is so beautiful. And so, just to know that we're creating another, I guess, source of accessibility, I'm excited to see that and appreciate the staff's hard work on this. So, thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Questions only, right?
Yes.
Are we, as of today, sure that this funding is all still there? It's local funding, so we have discussed that we think it's still there. I think this is a fabulous partnership.
Thank you. Yeah, so I have a number of questions, and I thank you for this really good map that you sent me last week. I really appreciate it. And that's kind of what I'm gonna be referencing. So, my first question is the path crossing at Crane Creek all the way up in the regional park that exists, or yeah, it's basically, well, it's hard to tell on that map there, but it's basically when it gets to the bottom and starts to go up, it crosses over Crane Creek. What does that look like?
There are a couple of, they're called punch, they're wood bridges that span over the predicted, it's a drainage area for the most part. So, we do have two bridges on that side where there's drainage and one large span bridge over Copeland Creek. So, it would be a bridge that is proposed.
Okay. And then we get to the Jenkins Water Tank, and it comes all the way down. And then what I'm curious is the slope when it gets to the bottom there, because that whole area is like a retention basin there. So, is that gonna push debris and, how is that gonna drain from that trail? If there's debris on the trail and repairs and all that stuff, which direction is it gonna?
So, the areas, in the plans, we've identified drainage areas just through topography, and we've added, they're called culverts. They're like pipes that'll allow the drainage to keep going through the pathway the way it would normally go through the pathway. So, the area wouldn't, the drainage wouldn't be affected in the area. And then the water tank road is already there, so.
Right. Okay. And then on this diagram, which is Sheet 4 of 38, it shows the bridge itself, and it shows this lovely net here. But it doesn't tell us how far down that net goes and exactly what the details of that net are going to be. Is that gonna go to the bottom of the creek? Is that gonna prevent the flow of fish up and down? Or how's that gonna work?
So, that, the detail he's looking at is a silt fence. It's for construction, just for erosion control during construction. It doesn't go all the way down to the bottom of the creek. It wraps around the area that's where the construction's happening, which is roughly like 90 feet away from the center of the bank. It's about 45 feet away from the center of the creek. So, it's on Page 36 of 38 of the plans. It shows that we're gonna span the entire length of Copeland Creek with one metal bridge. And then we have landing spots made of concrete on both sides, and we need to put a silt fence around that. That was a fish and wildlife requirement while we're doing the construction work. And then we'll remove that fence once the construction's done.
And then I see in the agreement that it calls out a plant palette of native plants. Does the council have discretion to call out the particular plants we'd like to see?
Certainly. I don't think it's a fish and wildlife requirement, the certain type of plants, if we've called out any here. So, yeah.
Thank you. And then finally, and I really appreciate you telling us that we're gonna look at this pedestrian crossing at Petaluma Hill Road, because that really led me to start thinking about this needs to be pulled. I watched those cars and those trucks go up and down Petaluma Hill Road, and I'm envisioning, you know, schoolchildren, you know, and so I'm glad that we'll get a chance to really look at that, because I, that was my major, you know, question that I had, was what was that gonna look like, you know? So, I appreciate that. I'll save those questions for when we take a look at that crossing. And thank you. So, with that, we'd like to open this up for public comment. And we do have a card. Mr. McKenzie, please.
Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, council members, city manager, city attorney, ladies and gentlemen. Patience is the word that should be used with regards to this project. You will, of course, have noticed and have already heard that this Crane Creek project is 2007. Well, let me tell you, 2007 is 18 years ago, and it was in general plans that existed 18 years before that. This has been a long time coming. The reason I was down here tonight, I was obviously interested in being present to see Senator Dodd being recognized. Always like to hear what the supervisor from District 2 says. But this is a project that is near and dear to my heart. When I was Chair of the Advisory Committee to the Ag Preservation and Open Space District, 20 years ago, we were talking about where monies were going to be allocated. The miracle is that these monies haven't been swallowed up and pulled back, that they're still there. So, I congratulate staff. I really do. This is a very difficult project, as you can tell by its complexity, to bring to this point. And the reason I'm down here is obviously to encourage you to vote unanimously in favor of the resolution in front of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And before we take our vote, some quick comments from my colleagues.
Yes, thank you very much. The amount of work that you guys, you and your team have done on this is pretty tremendous. I wholeheartedly support the use of moving the $700,000 over to do this. We'll find those funds elsewhere when that project comes up. This is gonna be absolutely beautiful. I agree with the mayor that this is super important, that we pay really close attention when we start talking about crossing over Petaluma Hill Road. That's a racetrack there. But the fact that you'll be able to start up a crane canyon and go all the way to infinity and beyond on that one path is pretty incredible. I don't know, how many miles is that? Do we know?
This is two miles. I'm not sure of the whole.
It's pretty impressive, and I just, the fact that you're having to interact with all these other agencies to get to this point. I was telling, when Mr. McKenzie was up there talking about all these dates, I said, that's so long ago. It was before I was born. I mean, it's just been going on forever. So, thank you very much.
Counselor member.
Thank you. For me, I'm just excited, so that way I can take my young adult kids to go on a bike ride. It's not too far from my house. It would be great to have that path open. And yeah, I'm just excited about this. Yeah.
Counselor member.
Same as before, so thank you.
Vice Mayor.
I just wanna say, we are so lucky to have this opportunity, and I'm very grateful to anybody who's ever worked on this leading up till now, because it seems like it's a lifetime project for many. And I'm really excited to take that trail as far as it'll let me go. So, yes, you get my full support.
Yeah, this is definitely a legacy project, as Jake has mentioned. And, you know, kudos to everyone who has gone before us. It's a unique partnership, and it's a great opportunity, right? That Anderson property really captures a lot of water that comes off of that Copeland Creek. And so, moving forward, I think we'll have other opportunities to increase that. In terms of the plants, because I want to just get back to that. I was struck, Marcella and I did a presentation to University Elementary, and we viewed their garden project, and they found 138 monarch butterfly cocoons in one day. And so, the mayor's request is, I would love to see as much milkweed planted up there as possible. And as you get down to the creek, there are several, there are several riparian varieties of milkweed that do really well there. And you may want to have a conversation with Claudia Luke over at Sonoma State University. She's engaged in that riparian work, and she has a butterfly garden over there as well. So, really, the opportunity, if you walk that property and you take a look at the wildlife that is in that creek, I've seen deer there, we've seen river otters there. This is, and it's a wildlife corridor, so it's gonna actually even encourage more wildlife to come down. So, we need to kind of think about that as well, because now they'll have a nice path to use. So, in any event, I really appreciate this, and I just wanted to have an opportunity. And then thank you, Susan, for pulling this so that we could have a good, you know, a good conversation about it. We look forward to talking about that crossing over Petaluma Hill Road, which is really the key to this, right? You know, once we do this, now we've gotta get the people out there, and we've gotta get them out there safely to really enjoy this uplift to our community, right? It's a quality of life issue. So, thank you. And with that, we have a motion. We have a second. Do a vote of acclamation. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none, the motion carries 5-0.
Mayor, before we move on, I just wanna clarify that the consent calendar, with the exception of 7I and 7H, was actually adopted by a 5-0, and 7H was adopted by 4001 with the abstention of Vice Mayor Sambor.
Correct. Thank you. Thank you very much for pointing that out, too. Okay. With that, with that, let's get to the regular items. We're gonna receive and file code compliance annual report 2024. And it looks like we're gonna welcome Ali Judice to present this item.
Wait a minute. No, that, never mind.
Okay. Thanks.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Ali.
Welcome.
I'm Ali Judice, and did you need me to pause? Okay.
Yes.
I'm Ali Judice, and I will be providing the presentation on our Code Compliance 2024 Annual Report. So, just some key updates for 2024. We had, there were three things that are of major importance, and that is that we transitioned our code of compliance cases from GO-GOV to CodeTrak. This basically allowed us to better integrate with our planning and building permitting process so that staff is aware when they're receiving permit applications, when there's a code case. And that's allowed us to better provide service to the community members and process permits promptly as code compliance is looking for compliance. We also brought forward Title 1. Your city council adopted Title 1, or amendments to Title 1 earlier in the year. And this basically established a clearer process for our staff to be able to do code compliance and provide a process for citation and administrative abatements. And then lastly, we saw a 22% decrease in case volumes from going down from 1,672 cases in 2023 to 1,303 cases in 2024. And this is primarily due to our staff doing educational outreach, just being out there in the community and trying to get compliance in prior years, and I'll show you that in just a second. But essentially, doing educational outreach has allowed us to see a decrease in case volume. So, this chart shows you kind of the code cases that have occurred since 2012. As you see in 2022, we started to see a pretty significant increase in code cases. And that, you'll see that because we started some proactive enforcement programs like the shopping cart abatement program. We did, we've been doing homeless outreach and doing some code cases related to that, and then some business license compliance programs that we started in late 2022 and throughout 2023. And those have allowed us to provide better education to our business community, and now we're seeing more business licenses come through without having to do the compliance process. So, this slide shows where we're seeing a decrease and an increase in code cases. Like I mentioned before, we, in business license, you see 66 less cases. And that is, again, because we were doing more proactive outreach. You'll see under shopping cart enforcement that we saw a significant decrease, and that's, again, reaching out to the business owners, making sure that they're aware of their obligation to keep shopping carts on site, secure them nightly so that we're not seeing them out in the creeks and the streets and having to pick them up. And so, we're seeing a decrease. We hope to continue to see a decrease in the future, in future years. And then another place where we saw some reduction is homeless-related cases with a 35% decrease there. This gives you an indication of how the case load kind of breaks up in terms of the type of code cases. Shopping cases, shopping cart cases seem to take up the most amount of time. There's a lot of work that goes along with it. Shopping cart cases can sometimes involve homeless issues, so those are, there's some crossover there. And then just general property and public nuisance cases. Those are cases that are related to zoning, building code violations, that sort of thing. And then in terms of citations issued, we saw an increase from 2023 to 2024. You see a 48% increase in the total funds that we cited with a 54% increase in the total citations. And this is merely a, you know, how many citations were issued, not necessarily collected. The numbers collected can vary depending on, you know, how responsive our code cases are. And then in 2024, we began some additional proactive enforcement initiatives, including reaching out to unpermitted food vendors that involved going out at night, talking to mobile food vendors, letting them know that there's a process for obtaining a legal food vending operation. We also started a sidewalk obstruction code compliance initiative that involved going out to property owners, properties, and letting them know when there's, for example, a boat or an RV that's blocking the sidewalk. We wanted to make sure those are not happening. That was successful. We have begun a graffiti abatement program, which will continue. We just are working on trying to make sure that we are responding immediately and that they don't become an ongoing issue. This is an example of that. So, for 2024, we also continued the, as I mentioned, the shopping cart abatement program is one of the key items that are keeping our staff busy. We also have been working on hazardous weed abatement program, and this is related to residential properties only. We, public safety focuses on commercial and larger vacant properties, so it's kind of a collaborative effort where we're getting a piece of the weed abatement pie, and public safety is getting the other piece. We continue to work on homeless issues, and then the business compliance is another place where we're, this is a partnership. Business Finance is the primary place where business licenses are issued. They handle sending out letters, making sure that, you know, business owners are, you know, addressing and complying with their business license requirements, but there are cases where we don't see business licenses come through. So, our code enforcement staff works with our finance department to collect those business licenses. So, that concludes my report. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. And being as there's no action associated with this item, we'll go ahead and go to public comment. We will allow the public to speak. And first up, please, Steve Keith. Welcome. Again.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening again, Mayor, Madam Mayor, council members and staff. One thing, I wanted to bring a couple of things to the council's attention that perhaps they'll engage with staff about this report. Namely, Ordinance 986, that outlines the changes made to Title 1 of the Rohnert Park Municipal Code mentioned in this report, does not appear on library.municode.com. And that's the site that our city's website, through a link, sends you to if you want to look at our codes and the lists of ordinances. I believe the most recent ordinance that they have on there is 985, which is October 22 of 2024, I believe. So, I don't know what bearing that might have on any of this, but just in my preparation of looking over this report, I did come across that discrepancy. of looking over this report, I did come across that discrepancy. Um, a few other things, um, just perhaps get some clarification on language. It does talk about pro, um, um, starting to work on, on being proactive with compliance, uh, strategies. And then it says targeting specific health and safety concerns. And I wonder if there might be a list of that. Um, when it talks about, um, sidewalk obstructions, I think there's also a line here about the, it talks about the easement and residents' responsibilities for the sidewalk, uh, which we may not all be aware of, but we are responsible for the upkeep of that sidewalk, um, which is a bit of a, uh, um, difficult pill to swallow, given how many of the sidewalks were improperly installed to begin with. Um, and I'm wondering if the city has a program to address those, um, rather than have the, the resident have to, um, fix, um, a sidewalk that's sinking when it, had it been installed properly, it, it, it shouldn't have sunk. Um, it mentions also hazardous weeds and, uh, it mentions specifically seasonal wet, uh, weed abatement. Um, to that I say, what season? What season is the abatement occurring? As I mentioned, it's fire hazard. So I'd imagine all my beautiful, uh, plants that have not yet found their virtue, that the city in California calls a weed, as long as they're green, they're not a hazard for fire. Um, and lastly, uh, strengthening efforts to identify businesses operating without a business license and a targeted outreach. I'm wondering what those efforts to identify is, what that looks like, um, if that could be, um, explained further. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. And I saw our Director of Development Services taking vigorous notes, so I'm sure we will get back to you. On that next up, Lori Street, please. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Lori Street. I know a couple of you already. Um, I am here to talk about code enforcement and how some infractions are handled or not handled. Um, we recently, a couple of weeks ago, received, received a, um, pre-citation for a fence that stands in our front yard. My husband and I bought our home in 2019. There was already an existing fence. It was six foot tall and solid wood. Um, you couldn't see through it. And recently, this past summer, we replaced that with a fence that is five feet, um, with slats in between. We can see the street. People can see us. Um, but we received a citation because someone complained about us. Um, in our neighborhood, there's at least six of us neighbors that have a, at least a six foot tall fence in their front yard. But you're only receiving citations if someone complains about it. We've been harassed by a neighbor and I feel like this is an extension of that. Our cars have been cited and I feel like they're just using the city of Rona Park at this point. Um, and I don't feel that it's fair. I don't, I feel like, um, we're being singled out. We're not, I'm, in your own neighborhoods, I guarantee you, there are six foot tall fences in people's front yards. Um, and I just don't think it's fair. I would like the city to address that, to question why, why, why is code only being enforced if it's complained about? If it's a code violation, then make everybody accountable, not just single out somebody because they're being complained about.
Well, thank you for coming down. We appreciate your comments. And I saw Director of Development Services taking some vigorous notes with that as well. So we will get back to you. I'll turn to my colleagues. Uh, once again, this is not an actionable item, but questions and/or comments.
Thank you. I appreciate the report. Um, I remember years ago, the first time we heard one of these reports, there was the slide about shopping carts. And I remember thinking after a year or two of this, if I was an alien and I came to a city council meeting, I would think the biggest problem in town was shopping carts, right? And still were like 42.8% shopping carts. Now I say that at the same time, knowing that I have had people approach me in the grocery store, at church, in various places saying they appreciate how clean Rona Park is. And it is clean because the work the code enforcement is doing. And so this is a little bit of a double edged sword because the work you're doing with the shopping carts, right? But I, I don't think that gives a, the fact that's the 42.8%, I don't think that gives an accurate view of what you're doing and all the other things doing because you've got people picking up trash. I mean, this is a, you know, editorial comment, but I think the reason why our sales taxes aren't as bad as other people's because they're coming here to shop because it's cleaner to come to drive into Rona Park because of what you're doing in code enforcement. Um, that said, my first question about the shopping carts is, is there cost recovery associated with all of that work? So let's say you take a, a shopping cart, I'm just reading off of Jackie's list over here. If you take a shopping cart back to my store that I let out, am I paying for that?
Not at the moment. I mean, there is a, if we continue to see violations, we do issue citations. Um, but no, it's
Okay.
Code enforcement for the most part is not cost recovery.
Okay. So thank you. Um, my second question is, um, and Joyce Pueyo was here earlier and, and Lori Street and her husband are here and I appreciate them coming. This notion that to get to their house to talk about their fence that is objectionable to one of their neighbors, and I think the chief was here a little while ago, oh, here he is. I think the chief could tell you that they have been, um, the subject of harassment in their neighborhood. Um, that in order to get to their house to talk about their code violation, you had to drive past five other fences that were a violation, right? So you could see how Mr. and Mrs. Rona Park find that to be arbitrary and capricious. And I don't know what we do about that, but I think we, I'd like to put that on a future agenda where we talk about that, where we say, hey, I mean, there's a guy on my, just drive, drive through my neighborhood. I might want to, you know, call anybody out, but this is a problem everywhere. It's the same thing with, um, Mrs. Pueyo and she was parked on rocks for 20 years. All of a sudden, one of her neighbors is irritated. Now she has $600 in outstanding fines. That's heartbreaking to me. And she's trying everything she can to, to take care of it. And I'm sure you guys are going to work with her. Um, but it's hard for the residents to kind of be on the receiving end of this. So I think you understand and I, I think you're, I hope my council, fellow council members would be willing to put this on a, um, an agenda to talk about. If we're going to assign somebody a problem in, over here, that the five houses that we drove past on the way should also have that problem addressed. If we're only addressing code enforcement based on complaint, I think we're opening ourselves up to some problems. That just doesn't seem fair to me as a, as a, as a resident, let alone a member of the city council. Um, the other thing too is, um, since this is a informational report, the information that you gave us about your, the success the code enforcement is having with the homelessness issue is nothing short of miraculous. Um, Bill Dodd, and, uh, when he was here earlier, you know, he talked about Rona Park leading the, I mean, people, again, people are commenting constantly. How did you guys do that? Well, political will, time, it's cost us a lot of money, but we've taken care of the number one problem that people had. And, and it largely falls on the work that your code enforcement people are doing. So I want to say two things. Number one, thank you very much to you and your, your people. I hate to use the word staff because as I said before, it sounds like a disease. Um, and one of my sons has a staph infection, so I really don't want to talk about that. Um, but the work that your team is doing to me is just nothing short of incredible. But I think we can, you know, bring it up a little bit and start to, you know, address some of these issues where she's parking on rock and it's, between her house and my house, there are six other places where people are parking on a rock or dirt and nothing's being done because one of their neighbors is not irritated at them. So I think I beat that horse to death. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Edward, please.
Thank you.
Well, I, I just wanted to sort of clarify how that issue, I think, should maybe not start on the council dais. That issue should start with staff and the city attorney's office and the city manager's office to see if there are strategies that we can work to address that. And then if we believe that we need council direction to address that concern, I think we've heard the concern, then we would possibly need to bring it back to council. But I think the first step is not to have it, the discussion on the dais. I think staff needs to get together to talk about, are there strategies that exist to address that before we put, impose that on, on the council?
Thank you. Uh, please, Jackie, uh, Councilmember Edward, sorry.
That's okay. Thank you, Mayor. Um, thank you for the presentation. There's one thing that I've noticed. Um, it's not just the, um, the code enforcement, but also the permit, um, the permit division that have been also sending us, um, documents to look. I don't know if it's every quarter or every quarter. Um, I, I find it very interesting. And, um, for the code enforcement, um, there was one thing that really struck me, um, the most is not only we are cleaning the carts all over the town, but also when there's vandalism with, um, graffiti, you guys are there. Um, I remember one time I would drop my daughter at school. There was a graffiti there, sent it a message, like maybe an hour later on my way, it was gone. So you guys have been really efficient and thank you because I know that, um, not only there have been some gang graffiti going around, but you guys have been taking care of it like really quickly. And also to take, thank you to the rest of the team, uh, because pulling all those carts from the creeks, from everywhere, it really makes our city looks really, really clean. And we all on the dais here get compliments from outsiders. When they drive here, they're like, what did you guys do to your city? It's so clean. Well, because, you know, um, we take, our team take time of, of cleaning it. Um, my other question, um, my colleague already asked, but again, thank you. And please, uh, let the team know that we appreciate what they do.
Councilmember Rodriguez, please.
Yeah, just thank you for the report. It's helpful and I know that the team is working really hard. Um, I was ready to second Councilmember Adams' request at the appropriate time on additions. And I'm heeding to, um, Madam City Attorney, but I guess want to also, I, I think I, I know I've asked this before. It's almost similar to when we hear folks calling public safety. And if we could, I guess, just maybe consider as when do you start crossing the line of like abusing the system, which is, the system's great, um, in terms of, I've, I've used the GoRequest app to be able to say there's graffiti or there's trash or there's this or there's that. Um, I know my household, unfortunately, the behavior isn't new. It's not because of this leadership. It's not because of the staff now. But over 10 years ago, we got cited because our trash cans were on the side of the house because we were accused of having not outdoor furniture outdoors, but it was outdoor furniture. And so I, I, I just wanted to note that it was, it was a picnic table. Um, that unfortunately, it's not new behavior, but I look forward to seeing how the staff kind of get back to that because it, it is a bit hard when it's like, but if you drive, if you, to get here, you had to drive past all these other possible citations and violations, right? So what are we doing? I, I'm not asking that we violate our residents and, you know, and, and, and I'm concerned of the staff bandwidth as well. But, um, but also we, our city wouldn't look so great if we're not aware of a lot of these things as well and the work the team is doing. So, um, I do appreciate the work that's happening. I love seeing that a lot of these numbers are declining because of the work that has been happening. So thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Hello. Thank you so much for the presentation. I did have a couple of questions, um, more on the meaning of some of the different things. So I was, just want to make sure I understand when I put in a reach, uh, Rona Park app request, that's what's feeding into CodeTrack?
So what's happening right now is we used to use GoGov and that would feed into our system and we would, you know, do our enforcement out of that. Now you're getting, you're reaching our code enforcement team. They are actually putting the information directly into CodeTrack. So when things come in, building permits come in, the, if there's a code enforcement case on the property, that'll pop up. So a perfect example of how this can be effective is, you know, we have a, for example, maybe somebody doing work without permits. They get a notice, then they come in, pull permits. Our team sees that there's a code enforcement case on there. They will notify our code enforcement staffs and let them know, hey, that case has come in for permits, just so you know. That way our code enforcement staff isn't, you know, going out there again going, hey, what's going on? Um, so that's how that's working.
Gotcha. So it's better centralizing the information for the staff?
Yeah.
That's wonderful. Um, can you tell me an example of what the signage compliance is that's lumped together with the business category?
Yeah. Um, so somebody installing a sign, often we'll see a business that has not received their business license.
Oh.
They will also install a sign and those signs need permits. So they, um, will get a citation for or, and, uh, notice for a building permit, sorry, a business license, um, violation. Then they will also get a notice for a signs without permits.
Gotcha. Okay. And then when we're looking at the total of the reports for the year, that's, um, each, there's one, count one per category, right? Like I couldn't have a, um, a business license code complaint that also counts as a, um, health hazard, right? Like it's kind of like, you know, how Chief was explaining how we used to count each incident as one thing and now we count it as like however many things were involved in a case. It's just
Yeah, I mean typically
You have to pick one, right?
Yeah, typically it's, um, whatever the greater violation, we still will let them know all of the things that are, you know, they receive, uh, a notification citing all the things that they need to fix. But when we have our code case, it's going to be under one of those categories.
Okay. So choose one. And then, um, there were a couple of vehicle, uh, abatement issues in there, which is odd because they're usually under public safety. So how'd you get so lucky to get two of those?
Oh, that's a good question. I wonder if Eric can pop up to the podium and provide that answer.
When I saw it, I thought like, oh, maybe, I don't know, somebody's parked their car for too long and that should be under public safety, right?
Welcome.
You're there. It's, or it was on.
I turned it off. Okay. Yeah, the vehicle abatement, um, it is kind of an odd duck in the sense that it's not, it lives in public safety land. So a vehicle abatement issue, these two particular cases were, you know, vehicles that were parked on private property that were, you know, the only case that we got was specifically for that vehicle. And so we addressed that through the vehicle abatement under that section of our municipal code. So these were like these, the two little odd things that we don't normally do. We can do them under very rare circumstances, but in these particular, this data set, this is what popped up as the, as the two primary cases.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
You gotta love those classic car projects that people are going to get to eventually in their driveway. Um, and then, uh, I just wanted to call out for residents, since graffiti does happen on private property, you can get paint for free at the landfill. Comes in various colors and it's free. So that is a quick solution, um, to take care of that. That's all.
Thank you. And thank you to my colleagues. You know, our, our former city manager had a very, uh, great expression, said, nobody wants the government telling them what to do. They want the government to tell their neighbor what to do. Um, so, you know, having said that, you know, Susan Denies, years on, on the planning commission, you know, we, we had, um, previously existing non-conforming, right? So there's, so, so as you sort through all of that, you know, I look forward to hearing, you know, what you guys are, you know, are thinking, uh, you know, moving forward. I think personally, given the great success rate of code compliance and all of the great things that you're doing for our city, honestly, these are growing pains and, and, and these are things that we're going to have to address as we get more robust and successful code compliance. We're going to have to be able to sort through this and separate the wheat from the chaff. And, and we look forward to, to how the, and, you know, to, to what you guys are going to do in that regard. So, so thank you for all the hard work. Thank you back there for all the hard work. And in my experience, every time I use the app or I call something in, the response is, is, is immediate and, and it, and it, and it's great. So I think you're doing our residents a great, uh, you know, a great benefit. So thank you. So thank you. And, um, with that, I don't think we need to take any further action. Um, we'll now move on to 8B, which is accept and approve council priorities report. And we'll start with the staff report.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. The item before you is actually just, I guess, an affirmation of the three goals that were established. You may recall that back in February, we conducted a council retreat in which there was obviously important topics that were discussed, including council norms and also just reaffirming whether or not we wanted to continue with the four goals that the council, the council had previously established, which are long-term financial sustainability, community quality of life and planning and infrastructure and organization, uh, wellbeing. And also for the upcoming year, which is really important to recognize these goals as we are currently working on our budget. And as you know, you will, we will be having two budget workshops on April 15th and April 16th. So the priorities that we're establishing, obviously, you know, guide, um, and just guide our efforts in terms of our budget. And so the item is simply to just accept and approve, um, the three priorities that you identified at the council retreat in February, which are continuing to make progress on the downtown, focusing on infrastructure and beautification and of course, also focusing on emergency management. And as you saw even this evening, there's projects that continue moving forward with quality of life and also improving our infrastructure. And of course, you know, working very closely with the various departments on emergency management efforts. And of course, not to mention the, the downtown, we are obviously moving forward with CenterCal and hope that we have an agreement before you, before the end of this year. So we are moving forward with these priorities. And if there's any questions regarding this item, I would be more than happy to answer those. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that report and this is an action item. But before we do that, we're going to open it up to public comment and we do have a comment card from Steve Keith. Please come on forward.
Hello again, Council. I promise this is probably my last time tonight. I just felt, um, just a couple of things I wanted to mention here. It was, it's interesting to see how the, uh, the council priorities have evolved in just say the, the last five years. They've gone through a lot of changes. They, they change every year. We used to have a whole bunch and now we have a couple and now, or a few, and now they're kind of separated into broad goals and priorities. I guess from, from my position, just as a, as a constituent, I wonder, um, how that affects, um, daily life for me as a resident, what it does for the city and the changes that might occur, um, especially when they, they change every year. And just in the past five years, there are some items that have just completely vanished, that we don't seem to talk about much anymore. I do understand the, the focus on the downtown. That's a huge project. But it's also 2025 and I don't think we have a general plan yet. It seems like we're a, a bit behind on that. And, uh, I guess, I guess I hope that would have been a priority and perhaps it, it is somewhere deep in the language, but that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll ask our city manager to provide just a quick update on the general plan and, uh, if you would go ahead and comment to those, to those questions.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And one of the things to keep in mind is just because there are those, for example, the general plan, that's a very active project that our city staff is working on. And the plan is to bring that by, by May to the council. I mean, right now I know we are working and I know Ally's getting up, so she'll probably provide an update. But what I, what is important to understand is that even though you may not see it reflected in these priorities, it does not mean that the staff is not working on, you know, different initiatives. In fact, and I, I didn't mention this, but during the retreat, you may recall that we had several, uh, you know, groups come in and talk about the city considering a tobacco licensing program. Well, we are researching that and figuring out what does that entail. So there, there is, you know, obviously certain things that are not specifically called out in the report that you have in front of you too, that was prepared by Ref Telus. But again, it doesn't mean that staff is not paying attention to those projects or not focusing on them. And so I'll allow, um, you know, our Director of Development Services to come up and give an update on where we are with the general plan. We know that's a major project that we're trying to complete this year.
Thank you and welcome back.
Yes, thank you. Definitely one of our top priorities. We have been, you know, we started the general plan a number of years ago. There were some significant staff changes and COVID hit. And, um, so now we're actively getting that work done on that. We've been working on the, the general plan itself. The policy document, um, has been prepared and it's in draft form on our website. And we've been working on the EIR for that. Expect to release that EIR hopefully in the next 60 days, which will start the public review process and the public will be able to provide comment on that. So hopefully that means bringing that forward, that general plan and EIR forward to, um, to you by the end of the year.
Thank you. Thank you for that update. We really appreciate it. All right. So I'll turn to my colleagues for a motion to accept. Questions, comments?
I'll make a motion that we accept this report and then I'll come back to my comments.
Okay. Does that have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Please, back to you.
So, uh, thank you for all the information. Oh, thank you. Thank you for all the information here. I just want to point out that on, I don't know what page number this is, under key projects, development services, complete the general plan update process. So it's in there. And I think going back six years ago, we started out with all of these things that we're doing on a regular basis. And I think they were included to show, here's everything that's going on. And I think when we got a new manager, we got a new focus of, of course, you're doing those things all the time. Let's focus on the things that we want and really make the most progress on. I think we're, that's, you know, I'm not sure how that affects Mr. and Mrs. Rona Park. As I've said, I don't know a thousand times, people in Rona Park want clean water, clean parks, safe roads. And when they call 911, they expect somebody to show up quickly. How fast the general plan comes out is, it affects a couple of people, but, um, I think we, we have our focus on the things we need to focus on. I think it was a great, um, um, priority setting workshop. I think we covered a lot of ground. I think there was a lot of honest communication that day, which doesn't always happen. And I really appreciate the councils, you know, willing to sit through that and, um, continue to work really well together. I think that's why we're successful. So thank you.
Thank you. Please.
I don't have a comment.
Thank you. Please.
I'm just proud of the work that we did and that, um, just kind of reaffirmed that individually, we all are on the, on the same page without realizing it. I think that's, at least that's what I took from it. So excited to see, um, how much more work the staff are able to get done with our political will.
Right on. Vice Mayor?
I just want to add that another important thing about having a, a limited set of priorities, it really benefits the staff and the council because we see new shiny things and a lot of times we want Marcel to get the staff on that project and he reminds us what we agreed on were our priorities. It doesn't mean other things aren't important, but, um, nothing new on race day. So, yeah. It was a good, good meeting.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And, and I concur with my colleagues. Just a couple more things about the general plan. When council was seated in 2020, uh, and our priorities were a little bit different than past councils. And so we took a one sheet, a white paper on environmental justice and turned it into a full-blown element of racial, uh, social and environmental justice. That was a huge lift for the team. And then we went and took our, our white paper on climate change and we elevated that to a full-blown element. That also added an enormous amount of work. And then finally, our friends over at Federated Indians of Great and Rancheria have purchased about 80% of the usable land along the west side of town. So that also has, um, prompted a, a review of the general plan. So there, there were some big heavy lifts in that, in, in that general plan. And if you couple that with, um, with staff changes, uh, it's amazing that your team has been able to get as far as they can, as they have. So I appreciate the efforts. So with that, uh, we have a motion and a second, I believe. And, uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none?
Aye, zero.
carries five, zero. Okay. We'll now go to item 8C, Sonoma County Mayors and Council Members Association Support Letters of Interest. And we will hear the staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Sylvia Lopez Cuevas, City Clerk. As you know, you're going to be attending the Sonoma County Mayors and Council Members Association Board Directors Meeting in two days. And at this meeting, there's going to, um, be a discussion about appointing several people to, um, several different boards outside agencies. So the recommended action today from us is for you to consider the letters of support, the letters of interest submitted by several council members and to, for the council to authorize the mayor or designate to vote on lay nominations or alternate recommendations made at the meeting. So for Measure H Oversight Committee, we received letters from Santa Rosa, Hillsborough, Sonoma and Sebastopol. There are two seats, so you will be selecting two individuals from the list. And we have an opening, um, two seats on the North Bay Division League of California Cities Executive Board. We received letters from Cotati, Peraluma and Sebastopol. And for the Sonoma County Agricultural Preservation and Open Space District Citizens Advisory Committee, there are two seats and we received letters from Peraluma, Cloverdale, and that's it. So I'll now, I'll go back. And if council would like to listen to public comments before making a decision, that's, that's good to.
We would definitely like to listen to public comments and we recognize Councilmember Hinton from Sebastopol. Please, welcome, Nisa. Go ahead and push the button. And thank you for waiting there so patiently.
Sure. It's always fun to kind of come to other chambers and see other councils go. As you have received my letter, I submitted for the Measure H Oversight, one of two seats. Just to recap, I think I've reached out to all of you, some of you I've connected with and had discussions with. I've been a seated council member in Sebastopol. This is starting my third term, ninth year. So I'm definitely experienced to serve on a board like this. I also have served on the Fire Ad-Hoc Committee, two, two out of the three ad-hocs, um, in the last eight years. And most recently have worked really, um, very extensively with consultants that helped us understand the financing model so that we could go through the LAFCO process to merge our city fire department with Gold Ridge, which is neighboring. This current Measure H Oversight Committee has the Gold Ridge Fire Chief, who I know very well, Shepley, and have worked with over the last year, is the chairperson of this committee as well. I do realize it's really important to not just Sebastopol, but every city, including Rona Park, that part of what we're going to be doing is looking at the budget and making sure the money is allocated back to source. So that if our tax dollars are going in, then we want those tax dollars coming back to, to help support our fire services. You just mentioned 911, they want you to show up and show up quickly. I do also feel like I'm going to go ahead and use my three minutes here. I, I've really spent a lot of time advocating for this seat. I don't hold any other seats on regional boards currently. I did serve, um, on Ag and Open Space for six years and just let that seat go to somebody else so that other people would have a turn. And I felt like I did a good job on that committee. And Sebastopol doesn't always get to serve, as most of you know, um, on a lot of these regional boards because we're not on the main 101 corridor. Just because I come from Sebastopol, a small city, born and raised here in Sonoma County, doesn't make me less qualified to serve on the boards, but these are the rules we have to live with. It's really important for me to have Rona Park support me tonight because I've been following the voting and I've looked at every other council that has voted. And I really would appreciate your support for one of the seats tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So that ends public comment. And as is my tradition, I will take nominations from the floor and if we have multiple, we'll, we'll deal with that one. Cross that bridge.
Can I?
You can. Any of you can.
So I am, um,
So we're starting with H.
Yeah. Moving, uh, Nisa and Evelyn?
Nisa and who?
Evelyn.
Evelyn Mitchell? Okay. Do we have any other? Well, actually, do we have a second on that? Second, yes, we do have a second?
No, no, no. I'd like to make a motion.
Okay. Do we have a second on that? Okay. Let's hear what your second.
I'd like to make a motion that we move forward, Jeff Oprepki and Nisa Hinton.
Okay. I'll second that. Oh, sorry. Go ahead. I'll second that. So the motion is to forward Oprepki and, and Nisa Hinton. And all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five, zero.
Thank you.
Next, we'll go to the North Bay Division Executive Board. We've got two seats to fill and please, anyone like to make a motion?
Can I make a motion?
Anybody can make a motion.
Can I make a motion to have Stephen and Janice?
Okay. Does that have a second? Susan Harvey.
Susan Harvey, Janice Kater Thompson and Stephen Solman.
Right. Correct.
Susan Harvey currently serves on that. So I, that's what, that would be my.
And so does Janice.
Yeah. Janice and Susan are, are reappointed.
They both are? Okay. I, I really realized that. Sorry.
All right. So, so are you going to withdraw your motion? All right, so are you going to withdraw your motion? Jackie?
What was your motion again? Could you...
My motion was to put Stephen Solman, the mayor of Sebastopol, and Janice Cader Thompson.
If I'm reading this correctly, this is to fill the expiring terms of Susan Harvey and Janice Cader Thompson, whether they re-submitted or not, correct?
Right.
Which they both did.
They both did, yeah.
They both did, okay.
Okay, so does Jackie's motion have a second?
If my... I mean...
Okay, so...
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you.
You can second that? Okay, do we have any alternative motions?
My motion would be to reappoint the two people who are currently serving.
Well, we have to vote on it. Is there a motion on the floor?
There is a motion on the floor.
And a second. Then do you want to amend or substitute?
I want to...
Yeah, she wants to amend.
I forgot how to use a microphone. I don't know how I do this. I'd like to amend the motion to appoint the two people who are currently serving, Susan Harvey.
Well, so you want to amend the motion to appoint Susan Harvey and Stephen Solman?
No, no, no. It's Janice Cader Thompson.
So Susan Harvey and Janice Cader Thompson?
Correct.
Yes.
So is that agreeable to the maker of the motion?
If the majority of the council has it...
I got to start with you, and then I got to go over here. Yeah.
Okay.
So, well, she's asking for an amendment.
Is... Right. Is there a second to the motion to amend?
Yes, that's what I'm asking.
So, Councilmember Adams, can you repeat what it is you...
My amended motion is to move for the reappointment of the two women who are currently serving...
We need the names.
Susan Harvey and Janice Cader Thompson.
Okay, and I will second that.
Thank you.
So now we're going to take two votes?
So now we... Now, we have a vote on that motion.
Can there be discussion before the...
Absolutely, there can always be discussion.
This seems really murky, and maybe...
There's a difference to be discussed before any of this motion.
Well, no, she...
The motion was made so we could...
So we could have discussion, or maybe that's what needs to happen.
But prior to that discussion, a council member has the right to amend the motion on the floor, and that is what has happened. That was seconded, so now you have to vote on that motion. So you can either deny that motion, you know, a majority could deny the motion, but you have to now...
Can I amend the second, or can I amend the amended motion, that motion to discuss?
Nope.
No, you either just deny that motion, and then you will have the discussion on the original motion.
So we vote on the second motion?
Correct.
Where we can have some discussion about that.
You vote on the second motion as to whether or not, just whether or not you want to amend the motion.
So I'd like to make a comment if I could.
Sure.
So we just awarded the city of Sebastopol a pretty hefty seat there on Measure H with Nisa Hinton. And Stephen Solman, I'm not sure what else he's doing. I know he's the second on a bag. But I don't see any purpose of taking Susan Harvey and Janice Cader Thompson off of what they're currently doing. Nobody's come forward to say, here's a reason that these two women should stop doing what they're doing, and we should pick up with somebody else. That would be my... Plus, they both have... Susan Harvey has years of experience, and so does Janice.
So the question on the floor essentially is, do you want to vote on this amended motion?
We have a first and a second, yes.
Or do you want to not vote on that amended motion, which would mean that you would vote no on that motion, or, and then go back to the original motion?
So I'd like to call the question of the second motion.
Well, no, there's discussion. Not everybody has spoken, so you can't call the question yet.
Did you have a comment? No? Okay. Okay, so let's go ahead and take a vote on the amended motion, then. We'll do a roll call vote on this one. Have you got it? Yeah?
The following vote is to amend the original motion made by Councilmember Elwer and seconded by Councilmember Rodriguez to appoint Janice Thompson and Stephen Solman to the North Bay League of California Cities Executive Board. The motion amended by Councilmember Adams and Judice is to appoint Councilmember Harvey from Cotati and Councilmember Thompson from Petaluma.
That's correct. Yes. Okay.
Councilmember Adams?
Wait, can I have a... Mayor, can I have a suggestion? Can I just pull my motion? That would be easier for everybody.
Yes, you can.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams.
Exactly.
Okay, so do I need to ask for another motion, or we can just vote on...
No, no, the original, the motion now that is being voted on, and which was always being voted on...
The amendment.
Is the amendment.
Got it.
And the amendment is to appoint Janice Cader and Susan Harvey to the position.
Right. Okay, so we're going to do a roll call vote anyway.
Councilmember Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember Elwer?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Abstain.
Councilmember Sandborn? Mayor Judice?
Aye.
So the motion passes by 3011. Councilmember Rodriguez is abstaining. Councilmember Sandborn is dissenting.
Okay.
Mayor, I have a question.
Sure.
So how are we going to proceed for the next round if there is something like this happening? Are we going to talk about it first before going to the next nomination or not? Just for clarification.
Well, we can always talk about it. I was going to ask for a motion and then a second, and then we can open the discussion.
But that was stopped. We didn't have a discussion.
That's not what we did...
Another council member got to amend the motion before we even discussed the first motion.
Yeah.
And that's how we got here.
I think we went a little too fast.
And that's why I abstained, because without a discussion, I'm not voting on it.
Okay. So absolutely, yes. And I apologize. So do we have a motion? For the final, the Sonoma County Agriculture Preservation Open Space District Citizens Advisory Commission. There are two seats available. John Shribbs from Petaluma, Marjorie Morganstein from Cloverdale, and Karen Now from Petaluma. So do I have a motion?
I'll make motion for Karen Now of Petaluma. Actually, I can't even make a motion. Sorry. Never mind.
Okay. Do we have anyone who can make a motion?
Can I make a motion to have John Shribbs?
Okay, and what about the second seat?
Can we just do that one first, and then we talk this next one?
Can we do this one at a time?
You may do one appointment at a time.
Can I do John Shribbs, please?
So we have a motion for John Shribbs from Petaluma. Does that have a second? Okay, so all those in...
Now, there should be deliberations.
Discussion?
Yeah, I'll go. I think part of, and what the last one is, I'm also looking at all of these, not just... I believe that everyone that has put in is capable and willing and wants to do the work, so this is not, it's really not personal in that sense. I also want to make sure I'm remembering who's already on things, and even with this one, are we now having a very Petaluma-heavy when they already were heavy? Not that they're not doing the work, but I also want to make sure that we're making sure of proper representation throughout the county for these things. And also, at the last meeting, Petaluma kind of pulled a fast one on everyone and said, oh, never mind, we're pulling out, and so it left all these other cities and municipalities in an area of like, there was, the alternative also pulled out. So we didn't get to talk to our mayors, and there was some frustration surrounding that that I could hear in the room when it happened. So I want us to be mindful and for us to be able to have these discussions before we get into who can say what when. So I... I'll go back to my motion, and I'd like to motion to put Karen Now, just looking at her demographics of the city, as the second one, but I can wait for further discussion. Or demographics of her district. Apologies.
So I need a point of clarification. Hang on, because I'm the one who's getting us into the weeds on this. So can we do what Samantha has just suggested, or do we have to vote on the first one and then go to the second one? Because we have it on the table, right?
If there's a motion and a second on the floor, you have to act on that.
Okay.
I will say, though, there are other ways to, if the council took an action in this meeting that you would like to reconsider, there is a vehicle to reconsider any actions that you've already taken. That would be a motion to reconsider whatever the motion was that you want to reconsider. Anybody who is in the prevailing party can make that motion, and if it's seconded and a majority approves, then you will just reconsider that vote. So there are options to reconsider any vote that has been taken here tonight, if that's the desire of the council. With regard to this particular, if there's been one motion on the floor that's been seconded, that motion, after deliberations, must be voted on.
So I'll confirm with the clerk, do we have a motion and a second?
We have a motion by Councilmember Elwer, seconded by Councilmember Adams, to appoint John Shribbs from Petaluma to this Sonoma County Agriculture Preservation Committee.
And that has not been voted on?
No, it hasn't.
So the maker of the motion could withdraw that motion.
First, we're going to talk to Jackie, and then we'll talk, yeah. Would you like to keep that motion, or do you want to withdraw it?
All three candidates are not sitting on any seats, so I feel like...
We're just going to keep...
Sorry, my point was the cities, not individuals necessarily, is what I was trying to get to, just a point of clarification.
Yeah, there is two Petaluma, the city, two...
Yes, yes. And then on the last one, you added another Petaluma, and then at the last meeting, we added more to Petaluma. That was my point of clarification, not the individuals, but the holistic. When you have all of Petaluma, all of these, how are we...
Is that meaning in the leadership position? Is that... Okay, then I don't have a problem. Okay, amending my motion to have Marjorie, who is from Clover...
You need to withdraw the...
We need to withdraw the motion.
Okay, I'm going to withdraw my motion...
Okay.
And make another motion to have Marjorie as...
Morganstein?
Yes, and John Shribbs as the alternate.
Okay, does that have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay.
But I'd also have some comments.
Okay, so we'll start the discussion. Go right ahead.
So, Councilmember Rodriguez, are you talking about at mayors and council members when we were in that meeting downstairs?
Yes.
And there was that, okay.
Yes, exactly.
I just wanted to try to follow, okay. See, wasn't that worth going there for early, watching that? Yeah. I second this motion. I agree that we need to kind of spread around the opportunities for service, and, you know, this is, Cloverdale does not have a lot of other assignments. Now, that said, I also wouldn't mind if our team would prepare us some kind of a spreadsheet that says, here's all the regional positions. Actually, we need to ask Lauren Burgess for that at mayors and council members. Prepare us a spreadsheet that says, here's who everybody is all over the county, what regional boards are serving on, who they are, and where they're from, so that we get a picture of this going forward, because we're going to be doing this next month, and the month after, and the month after that. So with that, that's my second. I support a council member, although I don't have any problem with the two people in Petaluma, especially where Karen Now represents.
That's the problem. I mean, it's like, you have to pick two people.
Please.
I mean, the problem is that, again, I believe they can all do the work. I think, yes, having that from Lauren would be very helpful for us as we, I would just like to ensure that we're not lopsided, and also know, well, these are the people who put in. If nobody else put in, then it is what it is. So that's all.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, seeing none?
Okay, the following vote is for the appointment of John Shribbs and Marjorie Morganstein to the Sonoma County Agriculture Preservation and Open Space District Citizens Advisory Committee. Does the mayor want a roll call or just vote by affirmation?
Let's go ahead and do a roll call on this one, please.
Councilmember Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember Elwer?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sandborn?
Yes.
Mayor Judice?
Aye.
Motion passes by 5-0, and just as we commit, if I may, the bylaws that you received from Lauren has the first pages. It has a list of everyone who's appointed to all the regional boards with their contact information and name in the city.
Thank you.
Excuse me, can we...
Yes.
Can you send us a... Can you ask...
I can resend it.
Thank you.
I was just going to ask, hopefully not, but should we discuss a potential alternative for these, given the experience at the last mayors and council members, where in the moment, they pulled out? So...
I mean, certainly...
I know that you have discretion, but...
Yeah, per the protocols.
If I may, so another recommended action is for you to authorize the mayor, and it seems like by consensus, you know, you'll authorize the mayor to make, you put an alternate recommendation at the meeting if people pull out of the game, or, you know, they don't make it to the next round, then the mayor will be authorized to vote on that.
So I have a question about that. So why don't we have, like, yeah, exactly, the ranking, okay? This one, two, and two, and three, and he will have to decide the three or four, but it has at least the name of the preferred people that we want...
Because we don't know what other cities are recommending, so we wouldn't know, you know, how they're going to be moving throughout the nominations at the time of the meeting. So while you're making a recommendation...
It's kind of a game day decision.
For two people, Windsor might make a different recommendation, so it changes, you know, at the time the vote is happening at the meeting.
Okay.
Please, and then, Emily, go ahead. No, you first.
Thank you. I appreciate Mayor Judice, at the last meeting, he did this the way we're supposed to do it. He went to the city and said, who did your council recommend that you vote for, right? That doesn't always happen properly that way. That's number one. Number two, things start moving so quickly after the first vote, everything collapses, and I think, I don't personally want to tie the mayor's hands. I say, Gerard, this is on you now. You figured it out. You have to come back and live with us afterwards, so make your best decision.
Vice Mayor?
But I don't want to tie your hands.
I just wanted to say that although my memory's not great, we had this exact conversation last year, and what we ended up deciding was exactly that, was that the mayor can figure it out on the day of. We trust you.
Yes. Yes, thank you, and being chair of mayors and council members has been a unique experience so far. So, thank you. I think that ends this discussion. We'll go ahead and proceed to 8D and review and approve a resolution authorizing joint application to participate in Project Home Key Plus, and it looks like we have the dynamic duo here of... What's that? Oh, I've been asked to take a five-minute break, so we'll go ahead and do that. We'll just make it five minutes. We'll come back right at 7:25. I know you folks are patiently waiting, and we'll be right back with you. And I would like to welcome Ali Judice and Jenna Garcia. Please proceed with your report.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council members. I'm Ali Judice, Director of Development Services, and I have here Jenna Garcia with me, the housing manager. We'll be giving you a presentation on the application for Home Key. You may recall that back in November 2024, we presented an informational report to the city council and requested that you direct staff to continue to research the Home Key application and work with Burbank Housing to prepare a possible application for the Home Key project. Home Key project. So the state has released the NOFA, Notice of Funding Availability. We have been working with Burbank Housing on this application and requesting information from Burbank to provide us with certainty that they are able to process, develop the project site. Before I get into that, I wanted to start with what is, what Home Key is. Home Key has, is a program that has been around since at least 2020. They've, the effort is to find a way for development of permanent supportive housing. And they have had several funding application or funding grants for over the last five years. This most recent one was just released in January, or it was released in November with an application portal opening up in January. With this portal, with this funding applica- application, there is a $2.25 billion in potential funds specifically for permanent supportive housing. The benefits of this project is that it contributes to meeting the city's housing needs, it provides opportunities for permanent supportive housing for vulnerable seniors and veterans within the community. Like I said, NOFA was released, Notice of Funding Availability was released in November 2024, an application portal opened up in January. That means that we're able to submit an application. We've been working with Burbank Housing. The maximum application that a project can request is 35 million. The applicant needs to provide, demonstrate that they need the full $35 million. The primary applicant needs to be a city or county, which is why we are involved in this process. And the requirements for our, for our co-applicant is that they are able to demonstrate that they have three years of operational funding committed and can coordinate with behavioral health from the county. One of the primary reasons we're entering into this coordinated effort is that our regional housing needs allocation obligation is that we provide opportunities for low, very low, and extremely low housing to be developed within the city. This is an area where it's, both cities have a difficult time in seeing construction because it's difficult to fund extremely low housing without some sort of a government funding. So this would help us achieve our goals. It also helps us achieve our goals that are outlined in the housing element, which commits to promoting housing production at all income levels, commits to working with affordable housing developers for funding from local, state, and federal levels, supports permanent supportive housing development within the city. So a little bit about Burbank Housing. Burbank Housing has demonstrated develop, the ability to develop affordable housing, not only within the city, but within the county. They have built over 3,500 affordable housing units at 75, over 75 properties. They have properties here in Rona Park, approximately 183 homes. They also have demonstrated experience with permanent supportive housing. One of their most recent is this project here, which is Elderberry?
Elderberry.
Elderberry, so this is about, they're gonna have their grand opening next week if you are able to attend. So they have experience both in affordable housing development, but also permanent supportive housing. So how this arrangement works is the city's responsibility would be to be the primary applicant on this application. There is no financing obligation for the city, but we would have to, you know, facilitate a permitting process, streamline permitting process. We would partner with Burbank Housing to do outreach and let folks know where the project is being located and provide opportunity for comment and feedback. Burbank's responsibility as a co-applicant is to be the primary developer. They would be the owner and operator of this facility. They would be pulling permits and making sure construction happens within the timeframes allotted by the state. And then they would be the ongoing management of the site. So I mentioned earlier that there is an opportunity to seek up to $35 million in funding. Burbank Housing has demonstrated a need for about 33.26 million. They're gonna be asking Home Key, or we together will be asking Home Key for a total of 30.83 million, and the remaining 2.43 is expected to be through grants from Providence Health. And then in addition to that, Burbank would be obligated to continue operations, and they expect to need 1.56 million dollars a year for that operations. They intend to use the following resources as that 1.5 million. It would include tenant rents, and then the remainder would be through housing vouchers, through Prop One Behavioral Health Services, and then through other government grants and funding as it becomes available. So we have been doing community outreach, I would should say Burbank Housing has been doing the primary community outreach. We provided them with notification circle around 300 feet within their property, and they've been contacting stakeholders, property owners. So far, they've received some positive feedback. The, and Burbank Housing has dedicated a webpage to share any updates that occur. If you click on this QR code, you will be directed to that website. Information is provided both in Spanish and in English. If and when the awards are made to the city in Burbank, we will continue engaging our neighbors, neighbors within that general area, and we'll be receiving feedback and providing information as it becomes available. So the project is exempt from CEQA as a Class One CEQA exemption. It's also has statutory exemptions because it's a Home Key project, and that is included in the resolution. And at this time, I'm gonna have Rich from Burbank Housing provide some information about the proposed project at this site.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Just let me know when you.
Glad to be back.
What, you want me to forward?
Sorry? Oh, no, to click, oh, click, sure. So good to see everyone again. We were here back in November and talked, at that time, we had a number of different options, and you asked us to move forward and work with the staff to identify what would make the most sense. And we ended up, well, a couple of things happened. First of all, the, when the NOFA came out, which is I think about two weeks after our council meeting, it had a little, a few changes in it, a few things that we didn't expect. It kind of, although it talked about new construction, it, it didn't have a lot of funding, so you really had to have a lot of other funding available to, to complement that. And it also had some very creative ideas when it came to acquiring motels, which we have a lot of experience with. We've done, almost all of our projects have been converting motels, sometimes small apartment buildings. It allowed you to provide the, the, the funding that came in, which is 200,000 per unit, would go based on the number of units in the property at acquisition, rather than how many you're developing, which allowed us to take a 142-unit motel with moderate-sized rooms at best. I think they, they range from about 250 to 300 square feet, and combine them. And so that's what we've done almost entirely with the project is kind of, you know, it's a no-brainer. You've got these two motel rooms, all with bathrooms in the back. We pop a door in between the two rooms, one of those bathrooms becomes your kitchen, and the other one becomes a bathroom. And, and, just like that. But obviously, there's more to do than just open a door. I mean, we're, we're putting the kitchens in, we're putting sprinklers in, we're taking, you know, a deep dive into what can make this property sustainable for many, many years to come. The site here, it's basically three buildings, but kind of if you look below the roof line, it's, there's actually four buildings, but, you know, the roof is the same. Building one, I, I can see it from here better. So that's 22 one-bedrooms, one-two-bedroom unit, I think that's over in this corner, which is because it's an odd number, and you have to combine three rooms in order to make, make it make sense. I think we were, there is two studios, and I'll, I'll talk about that in building two, but the intent was really not to have studios in this project. We found, I think, I think, and this is anecdotal, I don't know, we haven't done a scientific study, but we think that permanent supportive housing deserves to have more than 250 square feet to live in. And I think that is a stressful experience for folks. They don't have much, many places to put things, so, you know, expanding that to one-bedroom units, I think will, will make a more habitable and long-term location for many of the residents. So again, building one, 22 one-bedrooms, one-two-bedroom, one-two-bedroom managers' unit, which would be in the front, upper left, where we'd combine three units for that managers' unit. The back unit has these two oversized studios. One is significantly large, it's on the third floor, it's the only third-floor unit. I think it's where this little, what would you call that roof? Pergola, not, it's something like that. And the other one just happens to have been a grown space, it's right next door on the lower level. So those will continue to be studios. And the third is 22 one-bedroom units. The unit mix is, it's gonna be 10 veterans' units, targeted for veterans, and the rest of the, I'm sorry, 71 total units, 10 of those would be veterans, the rest would be for seniors. It's gonna be a 55-plus property, which gives you a little bit of flexibility if somebody has a caregiver need or, or another use, but that's not a senior, that that could be accommodated. We've provided a little bit more flexi- flexibility when it comes to the veterans, so that, that can be seniors, but they can be older adults that are not as old as we are, or as I am. So the rest of the site, right now, it's all open, and it's open as well to the restaurant that's adjacent to the site. There's not even an easement in place, so it's a shared driveway and shared parking. We would change that. We would make this a secure site, separate from the restaurant, with two gates, so you can see the red lines here. We would have an easement, so they have access to the driveway. And, and that will, that will secure the site, that and additional fencing. Up, up there at the top, where there's a typical motel pool and a jacuzzi in the pool house, that would be, the pool would be filled in, the jacuzzi would go away, the entire building, it's open air right now, but would be closed in, and a community room would be created there. There's also additional community space directly adjacent to the lobby, the dining room. The dining room itself would be converted to office spaces for case management and administrative personnel. There's also, believe it or not, a nice exercise room in there with equipment, and everything has to stay with the property, so the, the ownership can't take it and move it away. There's also a laundry adjacent to that, and there's a common laundry room, which we'd convert to additional space. Oh, let's go to the next slide. Here's some photos. I don't want to focus too much on the studio unit plan, because there's, aren't gonna be studios of this size anymore. But we do have typical kitchenette bedroom and bathroom in every one of the units. Sorry. Yeah, so I want to go to the next slide. And the next slide is our typical demo and remodeling, so you can see how it's converted to a nice-sized kitchen. It's about 12 feet wide, but it's not, so it's not really big, but it's not a kitchenette. And that provides privacy. So another view of some, some unit specifics. We do have, as our service provider, Home First. Home First, which is doing Labatt Landing right now, and we did a, at the request of the city, actually, we did a RFQ and received three proposals from groups that were interested, all of which have experience in Sonoma County, and selected Home First. So we do have Home First here. We also have Stephanie Bagheila, who is our Communications and Marketing Director, who, along with myself, we went out into the community and spoke to residents, so if you had any questions for any of us who are available. I think that's it. Any questions from the group?
So what we'll do, oh, are you, are you finished with that?
I have a couple more slides, and then we can.
Please, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, that's what I thought.
So just going through some expected timelines, we, you know, if the city council directs us to, or authorizes the city council, or, sorry, the city manager, to sign an application, submit an application for Home Key, the next step would be to submit a standard application process, go through the process. We expect HCD will be awarding the grants in sometime in July. These are rolling grants, so it's on a first-come, first-served basis, so it may be sometime within that, that timeframe. Expect to execute an agreement within the, within 60 days of receiving notification, and then construction will begin. There's an expectation that the project needs to be completed and leased up by December 1st of 2026. So with that, I, the staff recommends adoption of a resolution authorizing a joint application and participation in the Home Key program for the property at 6,500 Redwood Drive, and determine that the proposed project is statutorily and categorically, categorically exempt from the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act as presented in the staff report and resolution. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Before we ask questions and go into deliberation, we'll go ahead and hear from the public, and I do have some comment cards, if you'd like to comment. The, the pink cards over to the side there is what you're after. First up, Sylvia Rodriguez, please, welcome. You were first.
You know, actually, other people were first, I think I was the last one to fill the card. So as you said, mayor, my name is Sylvia Rodriguez. I'm a board member for Iglesia Cristiana Ese. I'm also the property manager for that building. I would like to just say that as a resident of Rona Park and possible neighbor to the Burbank Housing project, you'll hear my colleagues address our, some concerns that we have. But mainly, I'd like to just say that my hope, our hope, is that if safety issues occur, that we can come together and find a possible solutions. I'd also like to say that we are happy to know that the needs of the most vulnerable in our community are being addressed, such as the homeless. And in fact, Compassion in Action is a program that we have at our church, and it, the commitment is to support that cause, you know, the, the most vulnerable in our community. We provide healthy food and diapers to about approximately 150 families a month. So we are very involved in the community. I know that I, I do know a few of you and have spoken to you, so you do know that we're actively involved. So just wanted to say that, in conclusion, collaboration can lead to solutions that benefit everyone, so that's what we're looking for. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Next up, Jorge Zatina. Welcome.
Thank you. There, there was a slide there that, can you go back to that slide that has the aerial view of the property? Just so that we could get a little visual here? Yeah, that one. Okay, so this is 6,500, right? So this is actually our parking lot, just south of it. We are 6,400 Redwood Drive, yeah. And you see how this sidewalk is there on the, what is that, the, the east side of Redwood? That sidewalk actually ends at our property, and then it becomes like a, a bike lane, right? So we have seen from time to time pedestrian traffic, and with the hotel industry, we all know that it has its ups and downs as far as people that sleep there and people that stay there. And I have actually stayed there when our church has events, like a Saturday night, we would, we would stay there because Sunday morning, we have church service. Saturday night, we would, we would stay there, because Sunday morning, we have church service, so I have actually stayed at the Best Western myself, and I have walked over to the church the following morning. But my basic question is, since we have seen some activity with the Best Western tenants on this sidewalk, and since it ends at our property, my basic question is, how will the city respond to the potential increase of permanent residents, right, versus the hotel industry, which is in and out, right, they're not really permanent? And we're talking about potentially, I think I got the number, it's 140 rooms being converted into, I think, half of that, so, so let's just say there's one person per room, maybe two, that's potential of 240 more permanent residents, so my question is basically, what if, just to make the city aware that there will be an increased amount of foot traffic in the area, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Edwin Guzman, welcome.
Thank you, good evening. My name is Edwin Guzman, as you stated, I'm the pastor of Iglesia Cristiana SE, our church building is adjacent to the, to the motel, and I mean, we appreciate the opportunity that we had last week to meet with Burbank Housing representatives, and we encourage the, the effort that are underway to support those in need. With that in mind, we do have a couple of questions and concern regarding the upcoming changes, specifically related to safety and security, and the, the impact of having over 100 individuals residing permanently at the motel. I also wanted to mention that Iglesia Cristiana SE actively serve our community by providing, like Sylvia stated, food approximately for 150 families twice a month. We are proud to have been recognized, also, we were here a couple years ago, at this place, for being recognized by the city, by our ongoing labor and contribution to the community. So considering our regular presence in the community involvement, and knowing that we are about four to six hours a week, what is the city going to do with the increase of having permanent individuals living there in regards to the pedestrian, to the increase of pedestrian? We are not opposed to the, the constructions, we are actually in favor of. I myself worked for seven years and retired from the county of Sonoma, I was an employment and training supervisor and permanent training counselor, I refer many clients, and I worked with the homeless population myself for many years, so I know exactly what that is. So, the concerns that we have is safety, security, and what the city is going to do as far as the pedestrians, because we are talking that these individuals are going to be permanently residing there. So then, we are concerned about it. So, that's basically why we are here for. Thank you.
No, thank you, thank you very much. And finally, Lillian Perez, please, welcome.
Thank you. As stated, I'm Lillian Perez, and I'm a board member of Iglesia Cristiana SE. Because safety is a priority to us, we would like to know, what will the city do to ensure that residents will make it safely across the street, knowing that there's many businesses on the other side of the street? Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak on this topic? Okay, we will now turn to my colleagues and questions and/or make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept this plan, I don't know what the numbers are, I guess we should look at that, right?
Yeah.
Hold on, sorry. That we adopt a resolution authorizing joint application and participation in the Home Key program, and determining that the proposed project is statutorily and categorically exempt from the requirements of California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to the Health and Safety Code Sections 50675 dot 1.5 and sequel guidelines Sections 15268, 15301, and 15322.
Thank you, does that have a second?
I'll second with discussion.
Okay, so, motion has been made and seconded, let's start the discussion, please.
Thank you very much. First, I'd like to thank our city team for all this effort that you put into this, it's like, there's a restaurant in San Francisco, it's in Japantown, and it's a sushi restaurant, and there's all these boats that kind of float around, and you take the boat you want and have your sushi, and this is like, this boat of opportunity just went by Roanoke Park, and you reached out and grabbed it, and I thought, great job. It looks like, it sounds like you guys are always just on the lookout for something that's going to help make Roanoke Park a better place, and this is a perfect example of that. So thank you very much to you and your team, and also to Burbank Housing, and I just want to say, although I've not spoken with the gentleman from Burbank Housing here, but I want to talk about Burbank Housing a little bit. When Gerard and I, or the mayor and I were on the planning commission, there was a couple of Burbank Housing projects that came through Roanoke Park, and I remember getting a couple of phone calls, not kind, that said, what are you doing thinking of putting that project there, and that project over there, you're bringing crime into the neighborhood. And I was kind of shocked, because everything Burbank Housing touches is clean and well-maintained, and the projects that you have in town, there are five of them, Willow Glen in W Section with 36 units, The Arbers at City Center, 56 units, The Gardens on Santa Alicia, 20 units, Tower Apartments on East Cotati, 50 units, and one of our greatest projects, Fiede in Nueva, on Roanoke Park Expressway at the edge of town, 24 units. And the fact that you're going to come in here and run this Best Western project, to me, is just a ticket to success. And I'm hoping that our team is assuming that we're going to approve this tonight, you already got your application ready, you just have to sign it in the morning and lick the stamp, right? Close, okay. I don't want to guess what my colleagues are going to do here, but my first question is, what is your, how many cars do these people generally have that stay in your units, these, these tenants?
How many cars?
Yeah, like, do you have enough parking spaces there for the number of cars that you anticipate?
Or do enough?
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, so there's 142 spaces for 142 residents?
So that's two per unit, basically, right?
Which, I mean, we expect most, if not all, but most of the units, except for the two bedrooms, will be a single occupant, but it will allow for couples, or a person and, you know, a senior and a non-senior, but that's, yeah, that's pretty much it.
And then, can you bring up the, the slide that has the pictures of what it looks like now, what a room looks like now, and what it's going to look like when you're finished?
Yeah.
Because the existing demo and new revised, so you're going to put a hole, or a doorway, and on one side where there was two rooms, two bathrooms, one's going to stay a bathroom with a bedroom, and the next one's going to be kind of like a living room area with a kitchen?
Living room, kitchen.
Okay.
Bedroom, bathroom, living room.
The furniture stays with the hotel?
If it's in good shape.
Okay.
Otherwise, we have a budget for.
You have a budget for furniture, okay, and then.
Fully furnish the units.
And what about utensils and all that other kind of stuff?
All that, too.
Everything. So somebody moving in there is really going to be in great shape. That's very impressive, and on behalf of the citizens of Roanoke Park, thank you, this is amazing project that you're doing, and again, since Burbank Housing is doing this, it's thrilling for me to go out into the community and say this is going to be a great project. The last thing I want to do is address the concerns that have been expressed here by the residents who are worried about your new residents crossing the street. And as I, as I were talking, I thought to myself, what is over there that they're going to go see? Well, there's, I think there's a, pardon me?
Target.
That's right, there's a target over there, there's a liquor store, right? And there are crosswalks over there? I meant to get an Earth Google thing and look.
You have to go to the corner, the right, the expressway.
They have to go to the corner. So what kind of training, because the question kept being asked, what is the city going to do, what is Burbank Housing going to do to make sure that all your residents realize that it is not safe for them to just walk out in the middle of the street there? Because it is like a raceway over there. So what's your plan? What's your plan?
The plan is to offer them to walk to the corner. I mean, it would be great if there was a crosswalk, you know, maybe close to where the target entrance is, but we understand that there are limitations on cost, and it's a busy street, so.
Right, but you will, you will remind the people that they need to be safe?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you very much, I'm excited for this, and I thank for our team to get ready.
Thank you. Councilmember Edward, please.
Here we go again. I am so excited, because every time I see this kind of project, it really, again, reconfirm what we, we are trying to do for the citizen, especially those here in Roanoke Park. I've seen a lot of the Burbank Housing. In my early, when I first got married, we had my first child, I lived temporarily in a Burbank Housing, so I know how you guys really do take care of, of the people there. And it's very exciting that this time around, we will have permanent housing, so we will have our transitional housing to the permanent housing. And the timeframe is very excellent as well, I was thinking it would take like, maybe 18 or, you know, a little bit longer, but it's, it's great, it seems like, if thing goes faster, who knows, it might be early, like, you know, the other surprise that we had last time. But again, safety is a big thing, and of course, we should not take it lightly, and hopefully, the conversation with our neighbors is going, it's going to continue to make sure that we really address those concerns, because we don't want to be part of the liability neither. And I'm happy to see that Burbank will be taking care of it, not the city, that was the bonus for me, it was, yeah, I'm, I'm just excited to, to see this project to, to become a reality, and to be at that ribbon-cutting, and put more people into safety, and reassure them that we are listening, and we are trying, especially now that we have a lot of veterans that will be outside on the street. I'm hoping that this will be some peace of mind that they can have while waiting for this project to be completed. Thank you.
Councilmember Rodriguez, please.
Yeah, I'm, I'm excited to continue the partnership, I think we've seen huge successes, it was mentioned by former Senator Bill Dodd earlier today, and current supervisor David Rabbit, on how that works, along with Home Key and over at our LaBath Landing, and I think, you know, part of what we heard today, too, is concerns of safety and partnership, and last meeting, our public safety chief talked about how we're doing with safety and response, and so we have very, thankfully, due to their work, minimal incidents happening. So the partnerships are there, including with the businesses, I know I've gotten some calls sometimes, and it's just getting them to the right person, and they find a happy medium in discussion with our staff of what's needed, right? We don't, we can always kind of think of all the worst things that could happen, but we won't know until we really get there, and so I just wanted to thank everybody for their partnership in doing that, and to really assisting those that are in need. I did look, because I, I kind of was wondering about pedestrian traffic, and so when I'm looking at the map currently, and I don't know if this is something, Madam City Manager, if you could respond, or one of, somebody from the team, but currently, you have to walk up to Expressway, I believe there isn't one, because there is an exit on the now, like, the granite business, it used to be Burlington, so there is a way, kind of that driveway out, and then the driveway out of, I think it's Carl's, no, I think it's Carl's Jr., and then the, the main road, and I, I've seen people kind of pass through there, right, and so, it doesn't mean it can never happen, but currently, I don't believe there's been incident of pedestrian that we know of in the last couple of years.
I guess that we are aware of, we have not received any notice, I don't know, maybe, I mean, staff, I don't know if the chief is not here, or maybe Public Works.
Kind of like off the top of head, yeah.
Typically, yes, oh, there we go, they were blocking him, so maybe he can come up, but we have not received any kind of notice regarding any particular, you know, accident there, any fatality, but chief is up here, I'm sure he can respond to that. Chief, please.
Welcome. No, I'm not aware of any traffic, pedestrian collisions we've had there, can't talk about near misses, but I know that we have not had a pedestrian hit by vehicle there.
Okay. And again, I, I say that very mindfully, that doesn't mean it can't happen, right? And it is a high-traffic area, and people kind of just whip in and out of areas, and the other side of that, well, actually, a follow-up to that one is, what is the distance between, because I know when we do these kinds of studies, what is the distance, or is there kind of like a minimum-maximum between one crosswalk and another?
I think Ally will field that one, probably.
That's a really good question, I don't know if Vanessa's around, but.
Vanessa's here.
I, I can tell you that, as you know, there's, the, you know, the width of that road ranges between three to six lanes wide, so I'm assuming each lane would be.
Then it significantly reduces.
I, I don't know the answer, because it depends on the use and the amount of pedestrians, based on, you know, what the project is in the area, so there isn't like a warrant, a standard warrant for, there needs to be a crosswalk every so-and-so feet, it depends on really the use of the area.
Okay, and, and then, the other part, as we heard earlier today, is where it goes from a sidewalk to a bike lane, is that, it was hard for me to see within the maps where that bike lane turns into, is that still Roanoke Park, or is that now out of our, or is that Cotati? Doesn't mean we can't talk to partners of the concern, but.
It won't be on that, on the map, but it does, there is a distance where it continues to be Roanoke Park, and it's, it goes, and, yeah, and then it continues to, becomes Cotati at some point.
So once it hits Copeland Creek?
Before Copeland Creek, is it?
Right, right after.
Yeah, right after Copeland Creek.
Yeah, okay.
Comes to the German car place.
Yeah.
Ooh.
So, I, I guess all that to say, but I guess my only thing is, I hope we're proactively watching it, and not putting ourselves in position of reactively responding to pedestrian traffic concerns. But again, I will refer back to the chief's presentation at the last meeting of citations and traffic, and how much patrolling the, the team does as well, so I'm sure it will kind of continue, if not put some extra care and notice into that.
And then, just, I guess for additional clarification, as you heard from the presentation, there's a total of, what, is it 140 rooms at the, currently at the hotel, right? And if you.
That's correct.
If you take into consideration, there's actually going to be a reduction on occupancy, I should say, so, I mean, obviously, we understand that I, you know, at any given point in time, I mean, you could be at full capacity, in a lot of cases, you're not, you know, you could be at 70, 80%, but I think it is important to highlight, there is actually a reduction, you know, I guess, presence within that site, because of the fact that we are reducing the number of units, and so that would reduce potentially the amount of people, obviously, I understand the concerns that were expressed in terms of safety, and I, I think if there's also lessons that we've learned, I think you have a great, I mean, A-team here with Burbank and Home First, and I think if you look at LaBath Landing and the success in terms of the management, and also the responsiveness of Home First and the team there, I think that's a very, very good, you know, example of how really the city and developer, obviously, even the operation part and the management part of it, that's a very good example of how the community, you know, really should expect that we, if there's an issue, we would respond, and so I just wanted to make sure that we highlight it, that we are actually reducing, you know, the number of units at the, at the actual site. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, please.
I have no questions, thank you.
Yeah, I don't have any questions, thank you, but I do have a few comments. So, when, when we started this quest as a council four years ago, we had no tools in the toolkit, none, we just had political will, and, and an amazingly talented staff. First came the Safe Team, and that helped a little bit, then came LaBath Landing, then came the Supportive Services Hub, and now. And now Permanent Supportive Housing, that final foundational piece that we need in order to address homelessness uh in our community. We have a great relationship that staff and the electeds have cultivated with HCD, right? From the housing element to the Surplus Lands Act to Project Home Key, now Project Home Key Plus, uh, and uh, we were awarded the Pro-Housing designation. And we have been recognized on a state level for providing housing and this to our most vulnerable uh community. And I appreciate uh the members who have come out today because everyone under God's green earth deserves shelter. And we really appreciate uh what you do for the community in terms of support. You now are going to have a unique adjacent opportunity to step that game up even more. You'll now have some folks who will be living next to you who are in need. And I was very comforted to know that you are doing very proactive work. In fact, you've been recognized for it by this council, and we appreciate you. Um, so I'm, I I think this is a perfect fit. I know that when we started uh LaBath Landing, there was a robust outreach from city and its partners, stakeholder group, and and you're always going to find uh an open door with Burbank, you're always going to find an open door with Jason and everybody over at Home First, and you're always going to find an open door. We can't solve homelessness by ourselves, right? We need groups like you. We need Unsheltered Friends Outreach. Takes a village to build community. And we're going to continue to do that as a council and as a people, and we'd encourage you to stay engaged. And uh, and yeah, so my my vote emphatically will be yes on this, you know, on this item. So I just wanted to kind of paint a little picture and give a little background and say thank you to the staff. The amount of work that you've accomplished in four years on this topic is just, it's mind blowing. So um, so thank you. And with that, I'll entertain, well, no, we have a motion and a second. And so I think we can do this one by affirmation. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion carries five zero. Congratulations. Okay, we're going to move to reports. And we'll start with Councilmember Elward, uh, Homeless Coalition, an appropriate segue.
And on the subject. Thank you, Mayor. So we met on uh March twenty-sixth, and we heard um a few groups talking. Heart was one of um the the conversation that took us a lot of time. So the board continued uh conversation about the role of the art team in the homeless system of care. And there was a lot of questions that were raised around access to the county shelter beds that has always been um an issue for many, many uh groups. So this discussion will continue at the May board meeting because it was too big that we couldn't finish it that day. So we're gonna um continue um during our May board meeting. At the April meeting, well, the upcoming meeting, the board will review funding recommendation for the homeless coalition, the NOFA. And the NOFA provides millions of dollars to the homeless system and care of care. Uh, this one uh is uh one of the maj- major annual activities of the homeless coalition board. So basically, they dispatch the money for who is gonna get what, and we will find out. That will be it for the homeless coalition. And oh, by the way, we have been like finishing on time. It used to be like hours and hours, now uh we finish at three o'clock.
What do you attribute that to?
To the city of Roanoke Park, of course. So um, for the Sonoma Clean Power, we had also, well, that one was a little longer uh because we um talked about policies for placement uh for placing items on the board meeting agenda. Uh, Mayor Zulman wanted to know because um we didn't have uh really, we didn't have a policy that drafted that explain how that works. So we took time to talk about that. And also, we received update on programs that reduce peak demand on shift energy to low carbon electricity. Uh, next was approving um proposed energy project section criterias. Uh, we we have a few projects that we were talking about, and um there's a lot of good thing coming to um Sonoma Clean Power. Um, the last item was uh we reviewed um and provided direction on the draft for the annual fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. And I gotta tell you, um, Sonoma Clean Power is really thriving. And today, um, they are going, they are mindfully going out in the community to learn about what is the need of the minorities. As a matter of fact, today, uh, there was a meeting, Sonoma Clean Power had a meeting with all the black uh leaders in the community, which it's at first, and I never really saw that, but it was really great to see all the the people, the leaders, um, um, the black leaders to come and really talk about actually how renters can save uh uh can also be part of new clean energy um like everybody else. And then I know that they have been purposely reaching out to everybody. Uh, we have, they reach out to our Latino group and also um native um groups as well. So a lot of great things are coming, so I can't say yet, but exciting things coming.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Hi, Mayor.
Hi.
I will give an update on yesterday, April seventh, uh, WAC-TAC meeting. Let's see here, uh, you don't need to know that. Um, all minutes were approved. Uh, the budget, so we got a final um kind of brief overview of the WAC-TAC budget, and um, there was a lot of emphasis on the age of the existing infrastructure. A lot of the facilities are forty-five to sixty years old, and it looks like about half of them have reached their useful life. And um, so they're in a pickle there, but the agency is planning uh twenty years out uh for their master plan to better, you know, predict and prepare for um the needs of the system, kind of looking at it from a big picture. And that includes any possible rate increases that they'll need in the future to support the maintenance of the infrastructure. Um, some major projects include um resiliency projects, you know, preparing for any kind of flood, fire, earthquake, um, and also doing some repair projects on the aqueduct. And um, let's see, the WAC approved the draft budget. Then we got an update on water supply. So everything I mentioned this at the last meeting uh is looking great in regards to water supply. We had that late rain um in the season, and so Russian River, Lake Sonoma, and Mendocino are all looking good. And we kind of got an update tonight on the same thing that we talked about yesterday in the meeting, which was Potter Valley. Um, I don't think I need to go through it again, but um, yeah, it it's gonna keep coming up. So what he said today is what he said yesterday, and um, and the saga continues. So that's it.
Thank you. Uh, I'll keep my report uh brief and focus on Golden Gate Bridge because Sonoma County Transportation Authority did not meet on the third, uh, so I'll take care of that at the next meeting. Uh, we met March twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth. We approved a pilot program uh for no cost or reduced cost, uh, kind of ride sharing. So now, when people get on BART or when they get on Muni or other transportation agencies throughout the Bay Area, they can get on uh Golden Gate Bridge ferry or Golden Gate Bridge bus and come up into Sonoma County with no additional costs. And of course, on the flip side of that, once they get up into Santa Rosa or Roanoke Park or what have you, they can ride the local transportation uh for uh for free as well. So that's great. Um, I think that'll encourage more people to come up into um Sonoma County and and use mass transit, which is great. Um, we approved an emergency contract to replace, I don't know if you've heard about this, one of the original electrical breakers on the bridge. And we're talking, this breaker was installed in nineteen thirty-seven, and typically, a breaker would not have that kind of a shelf life, but this one did, and it took out about half of the lights on the Golden Gate Bridge. So we immediately had to bypass it and um bring in generators, and that's where we're at right now while we get an updated electrical panel installed. The issue that we're having there, of course, is that those original things are no longer available, so they have to actually upgrade the whole cavity and everything uh to do it. So that should be completed in the next six months. And then, you know, things that David Supervisor Rabbit were telling you, they they are real. Uh, we've been discussing the Federal Transit Administration, uh, you know, is processing formula grants, including grant agreements, uh, but obligated funds uh need to be, you know, drawn down or reimbursed. Um, so if they're not encumbered, they can take them. So the Federal Highway Administration and the Federal Transit Administration are not accepting new agreements, they're not signing new agreements. And as I mentioned, if the agreement hasn't been signed, uh, has been signed but not obligated, it's on hold. And and there's a lot of important projects and jurisdictions and in, you know, transportation agencies that that are really
Holding their breath.
Really holding their breath to see what the news out of Washington will be tomorrow and the next day and the next day. So it's it's significantly impacting a lot of things. Having said that, traffic along the one oh one continues to be depressed, down by about thirty-seven percent. It's gradually recovering. Uh, but yeah, that ends my report. So communication, and I will turn to my colleague to the left to lead us off.
I'm ready. Okay. So we heard earlier that it's the spring book sales coming up for Friends of the Library. Don't miss it. Um, the Cotati-Roanoke Park Unified School District's Project Grad is having a paint night on April twenty-second over at Sally Tomatoes. Um, and speaking of the Sally Tomatoes-Somo Village area, I want to give a congratulations to Old Cas Brewery for their significant partnerships with U-Haul and the Santa Rosa Growlers, the ice skating team that plays at Snoopy's. So they are their kind of like official sponsors. Old Cas, you might see some U-Hauls driving by with old cows on the side, um, further putting us on the map. The Chamber is having an all-chamber mixer throughout the county um on Thursday, this Thursday, April tenth, over at Sommo Village at five thirty PM. Um, and let's see, where else am I? And on Thursday as well, the Status of Commission of Women for Sonoma County is hosting an unhoused and unheard event. Um, you can find more online about that. You can join in person in Santa Rosa or via Zoom. On April twelfth, Sonoma State is hosting Expand Your Horizons, which focuses on STEM, STEAM for um girls in particular, youth. Um, so take a look at that, it should be fun. And then the Infinite Learning Center, which focuses on access to STEAM, um, is having their fundraiser on April twelfth, later that evening, and it's comedy and cocktails. So you, if you can buy, if you want to go learn how to make cocktails, they'll have a bartender there kind of teaching if you can't stay for the comedy show, or you can double up and do the comedy show, or just go to the comedy show. But that just helps um provide access to students for science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. That's what STEAM stands for. Um, and I think that was it. I think I got, oh, no, that wasn't. One more thing. Next week, Sonoma State is continuing their Holocaust and genocide speaker series. Um, so they have all of those online. I was relooking at it, and I thought, oh, jeez, I missed so many that are great. Um, but they're free to the public as well. Um, Dr. Dr. Hannah Jones, um, on their own, they even have like a little after thing, which was amazing. So it was just very impactful and um really mirrors what um what this nation's going through right now and and what to really look at. So highly recommend. Um, and most of these things, if you just check on the Green Music Center, Sonoma State, are open to the public. Um, so it's a great resource, or if you want to take your students, um, if you want to go check out the sports teams playing, um, or even go eat at the cafeteria. So now I'm done.
And I would be remiss if I did not mention that I overlooked uh Reports Under Government Code section, whatever that is. Uh, Chamber of Commerce noon times, uh, I was there and uh Mayor Emeritus was there. Would you comment on that one?
I would.
And I can comment on the Ed Foundation.
I thought the um Chamber Lunch was a really nice highlight of the organizations in Roanoke Park that are doing nonprofit work, including UFO, um, the Project Grad, and the Rotary. So thank you very much. And then I have one other announcement real quick.
Go for it.
Uh, and this is, um, I was reading the Community Voice the other day, the city manager's column about the DIY energy and water-saving kits they have at the library. So you can go to the library and check out a kit that'll help you figure out how much electricity your refrigerator is using, measures the kilowatt, um, uh, of all the different appliances in your house. An infrared thermometer detects heat loss or gain. This is at the library, so this is, again, not your father's library. A hot water thermometer assesses the efficiency of hot water heaters, refrigerator thermometers, et cetera. And then you you check out this kit, and you get to keep some parts of it, right? Some light bulbs, some highly efficient showerheads, um, two kitchen faucet aerators, bathroom aerators, insulating gaskets, weather stripping, leak detector tablets, and water flow rates. So um, you just go to the library, check it out, bring back the parts that you need to bring back, and it's available to everybody. Isn't that great? We have the best library, I'm telling you right now. And pretty soon, we're gonna have, the Friends of the Library just purchased a couple of little statues of Charlie Brown and um, who's that, his little buddy, Linus? They're just gorgeous.
Yeah, they are.
Yeah, I'm actually working on that agreement right now. How timely.
Did you see the picture?
I did, they're adorable.
Yeah, they are. They're all over the place. Uh, anyone else for communication? Okay, so I have a few, go ahead, I have a, I have a few. Um, oh, we didn't talk about Education Foundation, Sharing of the Green. We'll let the city manager report out on that one. You were there. You had the salmon, you enjoyed it?
I was, I was there along with all of you. So no, it's always a great event, it's always nice to be able to support them and just, you know, see the teachers and the positive energy of just the community supporting our, you know, students, our our teachers and the school district. We did get a really nice highlight uh from the superintendent that basically stated that our school district is not seeing decline enrollment, and part of that is attributed to the new housing that has is coming into the community. And so that's good to hear, that is good to hear that, uh, you know, we have, obviously, today, we've been talking a lot about just the housing construction that has been done in our community. So again, kudos to to the council for your leadership and and making sure that, you know, we have a wonderful and thriving community. So thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, and and congratulations to Dan and Vera, they always, and the whole board, they always do a great job. So there's a little piece of paper in front of you, and I'd like to announce the Ninth Annual uh Community Services Awards Dinner. It will be at Sally Tomatoes on May the twenty-third. Uh, this was a creation of mine nine years ago uh to honor our public safety professionals and our teachers, and of course, has expanded now, and we're honoring a Business of the Year, and we're honoring an Individual of the Year, um, all with the um, the object of Rotary, the idea of service above self, and using one's profession as an opportunity to serve. Um, so we're very excited, and uh we hope that you can all join us on the on the twenty-third. Couple of other things is, uh, the Rotary Club will be partnering with the city on April the twenty-second and doing uh environmental planting for uh for Earth Day, and we're very grateful to to Scott and everybody else for for helping us out with that. And of course, we are knee-deep in the um, in the tile project at the Peace Garden. Um, and uh, we've got a hundred and fifty-nine tiles committed by students in the Roanoke Park Cotati Unified School District. We're looking for two hundred. So if you know a kid who can do a tile, that would be great, and we're hopeful would to be able to install that that obelisk um, yeah, soon in the fall after we get everything glazed and everything. Uh, so things are happening uh in the Rotary world as well, and we appreciate all your support. Uh, that ends it for me. Eleven, adding agenda items to a future council meeting? Eleven adding agenda items to a future council meeting?
Oh, I, we were waiting to hear back from staff.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. I, I do want to add, if we could consider changing the start of our meeting time, um, to 5:30 versus five, part of it is parking. Um, most of our staff are in the parking spots and I think it might be easier. And looking ahead for anybody who wants to join council in the future, most people are working. This is a full-time job without full-time pay and most jobs end at five o'clock on the dot. Um, so I was hoping we could maybe discuss that or have staff.
Okay. Would any of the other council members like to discuss that? And I see.
Well, I'll, I'll.
Okay. Right, to discuss it. Right. So we don't, yeah. Okay. So that's it and we'll get it on the agenda at the appropriate time. Okay. Um, and then finally, uh, public comment. Anyone out there, Lisa, wanting to address the council? Okay, seeing none, uh, this meeting is adjourned.